Good afternoon, everybody. We apologize for that technical difficulty. Our internet is restored. Matthew, just doing one more test. You can hear us in Zoom?
Yes, I can hear you well, Sam. Thank you.
Okay, then, Chair Crandall, we are ready to begin on time.
All right. It's 2:00 PM. See if we can come back together. Oh, sorry. I thought, no, I thought maybe something else came up. I was like, are we online? No, don't be sorry. Yep, so we're back with our 6.11. And the appellant was just finishing up. And so is there anything else to add before I ask the applicant to come in?
I think there was one more person that might have wanted to speak kind of in favor, and maybe just ask if there's anyone else out there to speak in favor?
If you had anyone else online or...
Can we do that for the public comment?
Yeah, we'll do that for the public comment after they get their opportunity.
That's fair enough. I would say I'll step down and I guess I can still come back with a little rebuttal if necessary.
Yes, if there's questions or dialogue that needs to occur between you and the applicant, I'm pretty sure that that can take place.
Okay. I will take my stuff. All right, thank you. And so the applicant, thank you, sir. Applicant, if you want to come forward and...
We actually do have PowerPoint, but I don't think we're going to present it. But if we can proceed, I guess we'd just like to... Well, let me first of all introduce myself. If you're ready to go, Mr. ...
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. My name is Richard Knoll. I'm a planning consultant here in Lakeport. To my left is Dr. Angie Dodd. She is a consultant on this project. And I'd also like to introduce in the audience the applicants, Brian Pensac and Garrett Burdick, along with some other folks, Mike Mittel and Rick Steinberg, who are also involved in the project. And just want to thank the board for the opportunity and thank staff for their work on the project. I guess we were prepared to go through an in-depth project description. I think staff has actually presented a good description of the project, has detailed it out. And I was mentioning the fact that we actually both had PowerPoint presentations that we could provide to the board. But I don't think we're going to do that. What we'd like to do, actually, is if it fits into the process here, we'd actually like to be able to respond to questions of the board and to public comment. I guess we feel that there really has been nothing of any substance presented today that would constitute substantial evidence that would result in a finding of significant impacts under CEQA. And we'd really like to reserve the ability to come back and respond to any questions that the board has. And, you know, I guess hopefully we can get agreement on that. I, you know, I don't know if there's going to be any back and forth between the board and the appellant, but we'd like to obviously be involved in that. So with that said, let me just ask a question of the board. I think yesterday there was a correspondence submitted from our attorney. And it was via email, and it was sent to staff, and I believe it was sent to individual board members.
Yeah, Jay Anderson or Jay something?
Correct, yes. And that's it, right. I have hard copies. If... And I guess I'll just go ahead and pass those out. You may have seen this. It is something that, you know, we're going to review and summarize. We're not going to go through this verbatim. I do want to mention one person I forgot to introduce. Brad Johnson, our attorney, is...
He's online.
Online and available to answer any questions or make comments as needed. So with that, I think what we'd like to do, you know, Angie, you know, you could make your presentation now, or we could hold off and respond to any questions that the board has. But I think it actually makes some sense to present some background or some information detail about the hydrology analysis that we submitted to the county, actually several. So I'm going to turn it over to Angie at this point and have her proceed.
Sorry about that. My name is Angie Dodd. I'm with North Point Consulting. I thought I should... Thank you for letting me speak, chair and board. I thought I would start out by stating my qualifications as well. I'm a licensed civil engineer with a PhD in civil and environmental engineering with an emphasis in water resources, which is a focus on surface and groundwater modeling. I have over 30 years' experience working in this field and with these kinds of topics. I've also taught numerous courses at Humboldt State University to senior engineering students in both hydrology and water resources and statistical and probabilistic analysis. So I'm aware of the various analytical methods that can be used to do these kind of analyses. And I focus more on project-specific or not really the level of detail required for each project based on the size of the project, the background information, and the data availability. In this case, you know, the focus is the impacts of this project. This is a project that's not asking for a new water demand. It's replacing an existing water demand that requires more water than the proposed activities by this applicant. The cannabis activities would use about 42% less water than under baseline conditions. And it's my understanding, under CEQA, that that's sufficient to state that there will be no cumulative impact associated with this project because its use is less than the baseline conditions. There's also, as this project has been being processed through the system, the Urgency Ordinance 3106 was passed, and that was an additional requirement of the board for projects to provide hydrologic analyses, estimating recharge, and a drought management plan. And the project went ahead and provided that under the guidelines of that ordinance, which doesn't provide specific analytic requirements, but the analysis was done in accordance with what was requested by that ordinance and supported the conclusion of sufficient recharge and no cumulative impacts. Again, the focus of this project was because we had, unique to other projects, there is that baseline condition of existing agricultural activities. The review done by EBA, EBA Engineering is a reputable firm. They have qualified professionals that do this kind of work in Lake County, as Matt said. They simply commented on the analysis provided in the North Point Technical Memorandum. They did not perform their own analyses. They provided opinions, and they didn't refute the conclusions made, the fact that they didn't state any evidence that there is a cumulative impact associated with this project. In addition to that, there's a long-term monitoring well in this basin that has shown consistent recharge in the basin every spring. We have lower recharge... We're in a drought situation, so you'd expect somewhat lower recharge during a drought. It's hard to project what's going to happen next year or the year after if we have multiple droughts. But the hydrologic analysis utilized a drought precipitation of 6.5 inches, and in the last two hydrologic years, the basin has received more precipitation than that. In addition, there was opinion regarding connectivity of the various aquifers in the system. Again, that's opinion. There's no proof that they are connected. There is evidence based on water quality that they likely aren't connected. If the deeper portion of the aquifer has poorer water quality, not good enough for domestic demand, it's not getting into that shallower aquifer where most of these wells that the appellants live and are having challenges with. And as I've said before, under drought conditions, low precipitation, shallow aquifers are more susceptible to drying up than deeper aquifers. There was questions, I'm just making sure I'm getting all the bits without taking too much time. There were questions regarding the date of the study that was used. I did base preliminary analyses on the most relevant information, which is the 2006 groundwater study done by Lake County. I updated that with more relevant demand in the basin to address that cumulative demand. The storage capacity of the aquifer is actually underestimated in that. We did some preliminary estimates, and it's more like 12,000 to 20,000 acre feet rather than the, I think it was 4,000 acre feet provided in Bulletin 118. And then in addition, there's very specific monitoring requirements by the Lake County Cannabis Ordinance. If you look at the drought management plan for this project, the project proposes to comply with zoning ordinance Article 27, which requires the well to have a meter to measure the amount of water pumped, as well as water level monitor in each of the wells, in addition to the measures that were outlined, that would be general operating measures outside of a drought situation. Water level monitoring and reporting would be performed as follows, and detailed options on seasonal static water level monitoring in these wells, as well as water level monitoring during operation, and then how to implement that, and then reporting requirements associated with that. And specifically, it says, "In addition to monitoring and reporting, an analysis of the water level monitoring data shall be provided in their monitoring report and included in the project's annual report, demonstrating whether or not the use of project's wells is causing significant drawdown and/or impacts to the surrounding area, and what measures were taken to reduce these impacts. If there are impacts, a revised water management plan shall be prepared and submitted to the county for review and approval, demonstrating how the project will mitigate impacts in the future." So this is required by ordinance, and this is additional guidance to the operators on how to realistically comply with that ordinance. So I've always stated, stated numerous times, I'm a huge fan of monitoring, and I think monitoring will help us understand what's going on in the Burns Valley Basin, what's happening with the wells in the shallow aquifer, what's happening in the wells at the vineyards. I think monitoring will be a significant resource for the county, and the county has included that in their cannabis ordinance. So I'm here if you have any questions.
No questions?
I anticipated to deliberate with all of our colleagues here, so I'm not quite sure that the question was the scenario we were looking for. But I'm okay to continue and ask questions if the rest of the board wants to. So looks like I got the yes to ask questions. I did have a question, and EBA did bring it up. It's something that stood out to me when I was reading through your hydrology report, that there's only, not a requirement, but you were saying that even one inch of rain is enough to saturate and add into the aquifer what's necessary to keep it going. Can you kind of elaborate on that? Because I read that the first time, and it just kind of, a flag flew up, and then I saw it in the EBA report that I was reading over last night, and it seemed like they had a flag that stood up for that as well. So wondering if you can provide some insight?
The purpose of that, it wasn't even, it said about this much of rain would have to infiltrate. Not all rainfall infiltrates into the aquifer. The purpose of that is just to get a magnitude of the amount of rain we're talking about getting into the aquifer for recharge.
And what percentage of rain? Because I've seen different hydrology reports. Some people use 20%, some people use 15%. I think you used 10 or 15? I forget what the number was.
I use a model. I don't use a specific percentage. So it's based on land use information and precipitation and land soils and land coverage, so it's not specific percentage. I've reviewed a lot of the hydrology reports that have been done. Some do 15%. There's a study that was done where it's somewhere between 10 and 60%. Mine have consistently fallen within that range.
So basically the same range that I just stated, somewhere between 10 and 20?
Yeah.
Because I know that when looking at the rainfall, at least for one specific year, and it's not every year, but we know that our rainfall has decreased, that that area of Clear Lake had four inches, and so 10% of that would definitely not create a one-inch scenario going into the basin for the aquifer. But the following year, it was over 10 inches, which would then get you the one inch that you were looking for.
And the gauge I was looking at was just south of the project site, and it showed in the hydrologic year, if you're supposed to look from October to September, it was just over nine inches in 2020. And then, if I'm getting it right, 2021, or no, sorry, 2021, it was just over nine, and then this year we're at 14.
Yeah. And so that, I think it's the same gauge. It's probably the one that's available to find online rather than having to have an individual private one. Is that, that's the only well to be able to get a comparison of static water levels at this moment that's being openly and publicly collected?
So two different monitoring items. There's a groundwater well that monitors, they take and monitor elevation every fall and spring, so drawdown and recharge, and then the precipitation gauge is at a different location.
Right, no, yes. I was talking about the well.
Sorry. And then the well, yeah.
The CAS gem.
Currently, that CAS, fortunately, this basin has an active CAS gem well, but that is the only well located in this basin.
Do you know how far it is from the project location?
If, I know, starting if you're at 53, that's about 3,600 feet, and then we're probably another, how many, couple thousand?
And so the reason I ask is, you're saying that your project doesn't appear, because of past history on the property, appear to have an impact on that well, but it's also almost a mile away? And I know there's been conversation that your project won't impact at all the Burns Valley area. Is it because you think that there is that much water that it won't be impactful, or that you're so far away that it won't have an impact?
I think in that aquifer that we're talking about, the deeper there's sufficient water storage, and it does show that it's being recharged every year. That well is located underneath the shallow aquifer area where most of the domestic wells are located, and it's showing recharge even those. So what it's doing is it's showing a separation between that shallower alluvial aquifer that the domestic wells are in, and then a deeper aquifer in that basin that does have quite a bit more storage in it.
So if you don't mind, just looking for a science lesson, how does a deeper aquifer refill by rainfall but not a upper aquifer? You would think that that one would get it first, or if you're pulling a whole lot of water from the second one, are you draining the one above it in order to refill the one underneath? Like, how does that work? I mean, rainfall only goes one direction, and then it has to infiltrate.
You also have groundwater flow, and you also have unconfined and confined aquifers. So in an unconfined aquifer, which is the alluvial aquifer, it's more directly influenced by precipitation than a confined aquifer, which is what these wells are locating in at the upper portion of the basin. So if you're drawing water in that, I mean, I think of groundwater storage outside of the alluvium as a bathtub that fills up and stores water during the rainy season so that we can use it during the drier months. So, you know, really, to understand the complete connectivity of this basin would require groundwater monitoring and an entire monitoring, you know, similar to probably what they did for Big Valley Basin, where that was a much different situation. That's in a higher classification of concern for the state of California, so it's required a groundwater monitoring program and plan. This basin hasn't been classified as having that criteria. That's something that maybe should be reconsidered, but it's beyond the scope of this project. But from all the analysis I've done for this project in terms of storage, in terms of recharge, in terms of the yields of these wells, the fact that these wells were tested again at the beginning of this year, the static water levels were similar as to when they were drilled in the past, the yield was very productive, we're in a drought, and then they, they not recharged, they came back to equilibrium within 24 hours. So those wells have shown to have that capacity, while other wells are said to have been going dry.
Yeah, that's the part that's hard to kind of comprehend, especially not having the background in hydrology or water knowledge. I think what's difficult for communities and for us is farmland is not typically in a mountainous area. Farmland is usually down in the valley where there is that large amount of water because of the flow. And here, we're looking at a place that we've never studied before, that we don't have the level of data to feel 100% comfortable, which I think is why we have some of the reactions that we have from the community. There's a lot of unknowns with a lot of new activity happening. So I think it's definitely up to us to make sure that the new activity we're allowing is not going to have that detrimental adverse impact to the communities that it surrounds. Unfortunately, the fight between prime farmland and cannabis has split those things up, and I've helped along with that. But at the same time, we've asked cannabis to be in places that we just don't have that same level of knowledge or data of what's happening under the ground. So we're kind of trusting the data that's provided to us and trying to make our best judgment off of that. Where was I going next? Please ask questions if you have any questions. Oh, yeah, the Hops Farm. We were told by Mr. McGinnis that it's been there for nine years. I know there's been phases of it going in. Is there any history of lack of water from that area? Or is it that cannabis was a big ticket sale for selling their property? Because obviously, they were no longer interested in the business, or else they would be the applicant here, trying to grow cannabis. Just kind of curious as to, because I saw that in 2008, it looks like, there was nothing there. Maybe that was 2007, there was nothing there. 2008 was the first patch of about four acres. 2011, which kind of coincides with, I know EBA said that there was drilling of wells, and that could potentially show that there was running out of water, but I think it also shows the phases and expansion of the Hops Farm as they went into a different area. And I believe the last addition was 2013 or 2014 for the, there was three sites for Hops. Just kind of curious, is there any history of not being able to grow, or ever since each phase has been in, that they've been able to grow and be able to be successful in their projects over there?
So I'm not going to hypothesize as to why they switched from Hops and sold to cannabis. But in terms of the wells, from what I've asked, and I know someone online is going to discuss this as well, who has more history with the project site than I do as a realtor. But there was no indication of lack of water. Those wells are all about a quarter mile apart, so it was more for proximity to cultivation site than lack of water. So there's been no history of lack of water up there.
Okay. And I don't disagree with the analysis that you have as far as Hops using a lot of water. It requires a whole lot of water. I don't know if it's accurate to make the assumption of how much water is being used for cannabis. I think every area is different, the type of growing practice is different. But I wouldn't know the difference, but I could definitely say, yes, Hops is an extremely water-heavy crop, so that part I'm not going to argue against. I do have my concerns for the community. I think that we are just in an unprecedented time with the drought. And I struggle that we're in a drought, we know we're seeing less rainfall, but yet I keep hearing that the static levels remain the same. And again, unscientific mind, it doesn't quite make sense to me, other than somebody is losing water and somebody is not. And that's where I get concerned, is where's that connection to what's going on? There are, I believe there, I forget the number, but there are a couple of wells that have gone dry that are on my dry well report, but that's not to say that that hasn't been taken care of and that now there is water, because it only tells you when it's reported. It doesn't necessarily tell you when it's been resolved. But water's a tough one, and I hope that we, I'm sure you know that I've been asking for a higher level of vetting to ensure that we are getting the right type of information and that we are saying yes to the right types of projects. It's tough when people are going through what they're going through, and we're in a drought, and we're adding more demand on water. And in my opinion, with the phased-in amount for the Hops Farm, we can't say that they were doing 13.9 acres. amount for the Hops Farm, we can't say that they were doing 13.9 acres since their inception, since they were phased in, and there's no one here to tell us either that, part of the reason that they wanted to sell was because they didn't have any water, I can see on the map that it looks like they had water, because they seemed to have something growing at that time, but it also doesn't quite match the 13.9 total acres. So my next question is, how much cannabis is being grown, is it one season, is it two, because I'm seeing hoop houses, and typically hoop houses allow you to have potentially an early season, a normal yield season, and possibly even a later season, is it one season only, or one grow only, or is it multiple grows happening, and has that been embedded in the understanding of how much water will be grown?
So you're referring to cycles?
Sorry, yes, cycles.
I can't hypothesize on the number of cycles that'll be grown under the hoop houses, or more for protection against wind and weather, is my understanding, the amount of water use that is estimated is really an average statewide that's used for analyses until we get more information on water used by cannabis crops, water use can vary widely, the number that I use is more in the middle to higher end of the range, if you're doing multiple crops, cycles, they tend to be, you know, it just really depends on the operator, I know they work very hard to conserve water, I'm not a cannabis cultivator, they work hard not to have water damage to roots, they use drip irrigation lines, which tend to be a lot more water-efficient than traditional agriculture, again, starting to get outside of, talking about cultivation itself is outside of my area of expertise, but the water is the statewide standard that is used. I see your point overphasing into the full build-out of the Hops, but that's, you know, full build-out is baseline, even if you cut it in half, you're still using less, if the cannabis uses 42%, you know, you're still, if you cut it in half, then that's still baseline then is equal, in terms of cultivation to cultivation, crop to crop.
And you said you can't hypothesize on the cycle, but we have a consultant, and we have the applicant.
The applicant can, or the applicant's cultivation representative could speak to the number of cycles they are planning on, but it's based on what I was told, which is 120 to 180-day cycle, which is the typical cultivation season for one cycle, and that's what it's based on.
Okay.
My understanding is that it is intended to be a single cycle of cultivation.
Not sure if you can speak on the drought management plan, or is that something I should ask the applicant rather than?
I can speak on the drought, the operational items in there, I got from their property management plan, but I can try and speak to that and defer it if I need to.
Because I know that there's some statements in there that says that, basically, it starts off in the first page, it says, note, we're doing everything we can, so we're already doing it, and I found that a little disappointing, that the answer to a special drought management plan is, read our property management plan, we're already doing everything we can, at the end of the drought management plan, it says, if we end up with a dry well, we'll reduce the acres, how do we prohibit that from happening before we have dry wells? That's what I would, that to me is a drought management plan, is to ensure that not just you have water, but other people around you, and if you go dry, of course, you're going to have to reduce your acres, but what happens to your neighbors if you go dry as well? So I'm kind of curious as to how can we bolster that report, rather than just saying we're already doing it, and if we happen to go dry, then we'll reduce acres, because that's the beauty of cannabis versus a vineyard, a vineyard is a plant that stays there for many, many years, cannabis is on a year-to-year basis, and if you see that the climate has a situation that is prohibitive to being successful, that you have the chance to figure out business-wise how you're going to make it happen, but the idea here is to speak of cumulative impacts, and how do we ensure that everybody continues to have that same level of access of water?
So I would push back just a teeny bit on what you said, that we're already doing it, these are their operational measures that are part of their project management plan, what they do in a day-to-day operation, it's not that they're already doing it, this is what they say they're going to do on a day-to-day basis, so a little bit more positive spin to that, and then for, in case of a drought, there are multiple items recommended in terms of what they can do to reduce water usage, I mean, in the end, this is an agricultural operation, if there's no water, they have no operation, I mean, that's typical of any, my understanding, agricultural operation, but the critical component to address what you just said is the monitoring, the well monitoring program that would monitor the well during spring, sorry, during fall drawdown and spring recharge, and they're typically, planting would occur after that spring recharge, if that spring recharge doesn't occur, that's an indicator right there, that they may not have sufficient water, and then they're all, the recommendation is also to monitor not just how much water they use, so there are two things that we're talking about, the rate at which water is used to water the plants, and then water level monitoring, which is how the well level responds to using that water, so to make that something that is beneficial, a beneficial tool to the applicant and to the county on how their water has changed, and their water availability is changing over time, it's important to monitor it over the season, both how much and the level, and then what does the drawdown look like in the fall, and did it recharge in the spring, if it didn't recharge, that's going to show in the monitoring data, and they need to submit an updated water availability plan, and how they're going to cultivate if they have sufficient water to cultivate, that's the whole idea of the monitoring program, is to address that specific question.
And I get that, I feel that the part D of the drought management plan, at the very bottom of it, where it says, reduce the amount of cultivation, it says, in the event that one or all of the wells cannot supply the water needed for the project, I'd love to see tiers, where at 50% level, at 25% level, versus just, oops, there's nothing there, and we're not going to be able to reach our maximum capacity, I'd love to see that have thresholds where it is thinking of the surrounding area, because if the threshold is just what's under, in your property, and, oh, we have 25%, that still gives us enough for our project, my mindset is, it's not our water, it's everybody's water, or it's not my water, it's not your water, and so to me, it was waiting for a, almost a point of no return type of situation, and I'd love to see future drought management plans, and I'm speaking for our CDD and our Planning Commission, that it would be nice to look at tiers, so that we understand how we can be flexible depending on how much water, because from four inches to 10 inches, when the average is about 28 to 32 inches, there's a variety of differences of what we should anticipate to have access to, depending on what it is that fell from the sky.
And what you're saying is you want metrics to quantify when it's successful, and when it's not, when it's depleting, I think that's really important to have, and to have the county have some policy for applicants to follow would be very helpful.
Yeah.
And consistency would be very helpful.
Yeah, but that's all of the questions that I have as far as the water stuff, appreciate both the review of your report, as well as your report, but not being a hydrologist, I can't, I can look at things and say this, it's interesting, but I can't look at things and necessarily say it's absolutely wrong, or it's absolutely correct, that is difficult for me, and that's why I think we rely on staff to be able to bring their expertise and knowledge in reviewing and analyzing it, and then bringing it to us with their perspective and analysis, so.
I'm just glad it didn't put you to sleep.
You should read the stuff I read.
Are there any other questions?
I do have questions. Mr. McGinnis, the, I want to talk about violations that occurred. What exact, can you describe to us, and I know, this is the part that's going to be really difficult, because a lot of our staff were not here when these violations occurred, and so this is either knowledge of the rough summaries that were written down into our system, which I hope that has enough information to really understand what exactly we found out there, but it's tough when it's third-hand, it's not personal witnessing that you did by going out there, because it's after the fact, but I'm wondering if you can describe what exactly was the grading that occurred, what was the potential damage to the area, and then talk about the remedies that were put in place, and how those came to be as well.
Well, I mean, I could start by reading just the two accounts in a cella.
Please.
Okay, on, this is the first of two. On May 7th, this is just the wording from the enforcement agent.
Not your words.
Not mine.
Right.
On May 7th, did site inspection of 2050 Ogulyn Canyon with ag department invited onsite by male driving a white pickup named Dan, he escorted myself and the ag inspector through the site visit, per Dan, there were 40,000 high THC cannabis plants at the site, and that info was verified also, 56 rows of hoop houses over approximately six acres, with no permits for hoop houses, they are in all stages of construction on an upper site of same per cow, I would say, large amount of grading and terracing has been done with no permits, also found people living in ag exempt barn, and told Dan that the barn needed to be vacated immediately, and as of the end of site visit, barn had been vacated. The second one was dated 5/14/2020, site visit with cow cannabis, to re-inspect cannabis plants still onsite, so that actually is seven, a week later, on the 14th, on 14th May, to re-inspect cannabis plants still onsite, more hoop houses constructed, meet with Adam, Dan, and Mike, served NOV, notice violation for cannabis and building without a permit, and grading without a permit, Adam and Mike admitted to grading and building without a permit in front of myself, AW Fernand and Cal Cannabis Inspector, so that's in our county's a cella link.
And AW is for Andy Williams, I take it?
Yeah.
Okay. And can you speak to the potential damage of not going through an environmental process to review prior to doing a grading, and what the remedy actually has done to restore or remedy the potential damage that was created without going through the typical process that anybody doing grading would have to go through?
So, we have different procedures for grading, right, if you have a grading permit, for instance, or if you're pursuing a grading permit based on the cubic yards that are likely to be removed, or the fill of its dredged materials, for instance, we have different procedures in the county that trigger different impact assessments and review. If we're talking acres, and acres of grading, there's likely a lot of material moved, top soil, depending on when the grading took place, this is in spring perhaps, early spring, because it's May when this is being noticed, there's pollination, if it's habitat removed, you know, we're talking chaparral, there could be within that chaparral, you know, some site-specific species of concern, there could be some burrowing going on, some nesting going on in graded material, there could be some threatened or endangered species within that chaparral, or a special status species, like a manzanita or a sianotes that's unique to the region, so if you're grading chaparral and habitat, and removing habitat on steep slopes, you're likely to have substantive erosion potential during rain events, into hydrological modification of the site, if it's steep slopes, they were terracing, so I would imagine there were slopes involved, you know, the steeper the slope, the more erosion, the more sediments entering into aquatic areas potentially, the more impact on aquatic species, I think one of the things that concerns me when I see illegal grading, or a violation in grading personally, is, did, were native grasslands removed, I don't know what the nature of the site was before the grading took place, we could hypothesize based on aerial surveys, we could use Google Earth, that can take us before.
That doesn't help to see the grass blades.
It doesn't necessarily give you any on-the-ground
Yeah.
biological inventory, so even in remote sensing data, or data used from aerial surveys of habitat, it gives you some indication of what presence or absence of species might be on those areas, but it doesn't give you necessarily on-the-ground data on what particular species are on the site, only an inventory or a survey can do that. So, you know, when there's a lot of grading, and depending on the amount of soil lost, the amount of cubic yards of material removed, there are a series of relatively standard best management practices to prevent that erosion and loss of soil from entering into perhaps aquatic habitats, or creeks, or rivers in some cases, sediment loads do affect species like a hitch, or amphibians, or turtles, or fish, other fishes, that might depend on those aquatic habitats, so sediments are important to consider as they enter into our waterways, so best practices, maintain the site, revegetate the site, things like that are essentially part of abatement, in my view, did that take place, well, the applicant had submitted, I think relatively detailed site plans on dealing with the illegal grading, and a whole inventory of BMPs that were going to be employed to deal with that illegal grading, and those were approved by the director, Scott DeLeon, at the time.
Ms. Grant.
I was just going to suggest that some of this has limited relevance for your board today in terms of what the environmental impacts may or may not have been, just simply because you don't have any evidence before you as to what they were, or any basis to incorporate those into your analysis today.
I see.
Well, I do have a follow-up question to that, and I think it is relevant, how many trees were taken down, I think in your presentation, you wrote down oak trees?
I saw some notes in the folder from, in correspondence, and one of those notes was from you, that stated that you believed some trees were, some oak trees had been removed during the grading effort.
So that's the only place that it came from, was from something that I'm not hearing?
We do not have, we do not have an enforcement agent who noted tree removal.
Okay, I can see it on Google Earth, that there's definitely vegetation, can I say specifically that it's trees? The answer is no, but it definitely can show on Google Earth that there was a area of dense vegetation, whether those were shrubs, bushes, or trees, and the reason that I'm asking, just to kind of get to the point for Ms. Grant, is we're looking to approve an initial study, and to me, that initial study is somewhat marred by the fact that we don't know what the impact of illegal activities were to that initial study's conclusion, because now all we can study is what's left over, and so that is one of the reasons that I'm asking the questions, and I think it's important to go over the violations that we have, and I'll go ahead and move on.
Can I, can I add to something?
Please.
Because you were going on from grading to something else, right? Are you going on to something else next?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to highlight grading, how much, because just, how much grading was done, and if there was, was, what was their practice or their plan in case they came across some sort of cultural resource, I know that I've noticed in the documents, it stated they reached out to different agencies and tribes and whatnot, however, when grading is done, usually you have somebody onsite to see if something's found according to AB 52, which has been in place since 2014, so if there was grading done, was there someone there to monitor, if there was, was a tribe contacted if something was found, how do we know, you know, that's another thing to add, I wanted to ask, go ahead.
You know, I mean, sure, you bring up something that is also, and I apologize, that grading can have significant and substantive impact on cultural resources, and it's something that we need to really focus on, given state guidelines for consultation, some of that knowledge that we have within our department, or within other state Some of that knowledge that we have within our department or within other state inventories is perhaps missing in terms of the fact that tribes also have information that is their own intellectual property, their own intellectual, private rights to have. And so when we do allow grading, it's very important that we have, you know, inventory of cultural resources at hand before we approve it. That also did not take place.
Right.
The amount of grading on Site B in the, in terms of the amount of, in terms of our, our general overview of the enforcement and the violation is 56,640 square feet on Site B.
1.1, 1.2 acres?
Right.
Can I, just point of order here, Mr. Chair, if, if I can? The, the actual, that, that's the, that's identified as the square footage, but the actual cutting and filling, the, the cut and fill was balanced out at 1,315 cubic yards.
And I believe that 50 yards is the trigger for grading?
Yeah. If, if I can, can I, can I set the stage a little bit with respect to the grading issue? I, I was involved in the project at that point in terms of having helped prepare the application, and it is my understanding that the, the property owner contracted with a, a third party to, to engage, and this was after the early activation was issued, to, to engage in the cultivation activities under that early activation. And it was at that point that that third party, I guess, hired a cultivator from out of the area, had no involvement in, in the project at all, other than having now been brought in, and went way too far, obviously. And I'm not trying to make an excuse here. I think ultimately, the owner has responsibility here.
Full responsibility.
Correct, yes, no question. Which they assumed, unfortunately, after the fact. And it was shortly after that, that there was a parting of ways between the third party and, and the owners. They're no longer involved or around at all. So there was
But to be clear, the applicant did allow this to happen with that third party. So they're completely 100% responsible for this, and it's really a moot point if they're not involved with each other anymore because they're responsible for
Yeah, all I'm, all I'm trying to do is, is sort of set the stage here and, you know, just reiterate that there, there were remediation efforts and, and actions taken immediately to, to resolve the issues. And, you know, grading plans were prepared and submitted to the county. Stormwater runoff mitigation was employed. And, I mean, there were other issues involved. There was, there was debris, and there was a mess on the site. That was all cleaned up. So if you were to go to the site today, you would see where the, where the grading activities occurred. There were, there was a series, I think, of three different terraces installed, but the stormwater mitigation measures are in place. The site has been ceded. You know, in terms of stabilization, it's stable. Was there cultural resources, personnel onsite to analyze for, or, or check for resources? No, that, that did not occur. And I agree, that's an issue whenever you've got grading. You need somebody onsite to be checking that, that soil.
Well, the local, the local tribes have made it known that they're willing to be a part of these plans, so they could put together a plan ahead of time in case something is. And with, when grading takes place without that, there's potential resources that are not found. A lot of, you know, tribes have been here for quite a long time, we know that. The other thing is, is we're trying to put together, as tribal people, we're trying to put together the pieces of our, of our history by finding those type of resources in some instances. So that's a potential area where we won't know, you know, but, right, that's why I bring it up, so. So I'm finished with my question. I don't know if you had more to add?
Can I also respond to the tree issue? I had never heard until today that there was potentially some oak trees that were removed. It's my understanding that
I would say strike that from the record.
Yeah, I don't think
That belief that I shared, it should not be discussed.
Yeah.
I can show you Google Earth where I can, we can see the
No, I think
The vegetation, but I, I think it goes without saying that if you do grading, you're going to get rid of some vegetation as well, so.
Yeah. This was an area, as, as far as I recollect, may have been a, an old orchard, walnut orchard. And, and so there were some remnants of some, I believe walnut trees up in this area. They weren't doing well, and I think there may have been a few of those old walnut trees removed. That's my recollection, but I, I don't remember any trees coming down.
Ms. Grant?
The only thing I was going to say was that certainly a lot of the anecdotal information has limited value. However, the point that's been raised that these violations may have exacerbated or modified or in some way altered the environmental conditions that were initially studied, that is a bona fide area of inquiry for your board because you're looking at whether the environmental review to date is sufficient.
Thank you. I had two questions about you.
Yeah, my next question is, the notice of violation in the planning commission, the only thing that was discussed was illegal buildings and illegal grading. And I'm just going to be frank, I was, I was a little frustrated that that was the only comments that were made. I, sorry. Even in the presentation, there was just two bullet points that did that, but I don't have it in front of me, but the notice of violation had a bunch of other violations, and one of them was no permits or not all permits had been obtained. Can you speak to that as far as what was the status of those permits? I know that they had the early activation, but they also need, I believe, fish and wildlife needs to allow, say yes, or I don't know if it's a permit or not, but I know there's not just a state license, and I'm sure some of these consultants can let me know better. What was the status for the other permits as far as state permits?
Well, remember, the EEA is focused on, I mean, early activation, its foundation is that there is no environmental effect, essentially. And the, it goes hand in hand with the SEQA process. So ideally, the EEA is, you go with the EEA, and then you're going to go through the, the SEQA review process, do your studies, get your initial study, et cetera, go through the review with staff and the planning commission. And so when the violation occurred, the, the EEA was revoked because there were obvious impacts onsite, the grading. Things left unsaid, as you've mentioned as well, including the cultural resource issue was not mentioned in that violation in the stop order. And it comes to a halt. You're, you're asked, according to that particular stop order was, I think you had, the zoning enforcement agent gave the applicant seven days to abate. In some cases, it's, the applicant could be given 30 days for abatement, which means complete cleanup of the site. If there are plants in the ground, which we do not have any evidence, but there were plants perhaps above ground, if there are plants inbound, in the ground, abatement means removal, right? We don't know the specific details about the plants. There, in the public hearing, there is a note during the public comment period that somebody from the audience who gives testimony does note that there were plants on the site. We didn't have any photographs of the site specifically, but the Asella notice from our enforcement agent also notes that there were plants onsite. Whether they were in the soil or not is unknown. So permitting comes to a stop with that violation. The applicant submits, as, as the consultant has noted for the applicant, a pretty thorough review of the cleanup or abatement effort with the BMPs to be employed, that works pretty closely with the staff at the county to approve those guidelines, and then it, it proceeds after the action, and the permit process continues through the SEQA review process. What we haven't done is gone to the site as a follow-up to see what does that site look like today? We have not done that. I have discussed that with our staff, and perhaps there is a need for that, but that has not occurred within the last year.
Well, may I just make a correction? County staff, in fact, has been out to the site. They, they inspected the grading, they inspected, and it was Tracy Klein, it was Todd Elliott, and it was maybe Satur Ham? I can't remember now who the third
Wasn't that August 2021?
Yeah, I mean, so
I think I saw something about that.
County staff has been out to the site to, to, to confirm the grading and, and signed off on it. So they haven't been out recently, and in fact, I, I actually offered to Mr. McGinnis, I'd take him out last week, Sunday or over the weekend, if he wanted to go out and look. The site is in very good condition now in terms of, of any, any, any problems or instability. It's been cleaned and it's stable, and nothing else has occurred with respect to cannabis at all.
Can you speak for the applicant as far as state licensing and the 40,000 plants?
There were plants onsite, yes, and whether the number was 40,000, I don't know, but they were trucked in, and they were onsite. They were not planted in the ground. I believe they were in pots inside the hoop houses, which I, I believe the county at that time was requiring permits, and they didn't have permits for, for the hoop houses. So they were being taken off of trucks and, and put inside the hoop houses. And what was the other part?
The state licensing?
I believe state licensing was being applied for but was not received. That was a big issue with cal cannabis. They didn't have their state license.
Do they have it now?
No.
They're working on it, it's pending what happens for the appeal.
Okay.
So I have an email here from Kevin Ponce, who's over at, used to be CDFA, now it's the DCC, Department of Cannabis Control. Probably will change next year again. That says that March 2022 is the first time that they've ever heard from the applicant for applying for licenses, for state licenses.
Yeah. That's actually, my question is, when was that applied for?
Recently?
Yeah, is March when, when they applied for the license, the state license?
For me, when I was involved, it would have been sometime the beginning of this year that they started the process, it can take so long.
Okay, but why wouldn't they start as soon as the planning commission hearing approved the project in November?
I, they could have started with the attorney sooner, and you have to prepare the mapping and all the background documentation, so it does take some time to collect all that. And there's a number of, they're all 10,000 licenses. I know there's a procedure to enter all those in the system, and it just takes a while to get all of that done. I can't say why it took till, it just took time to get it in there.
And I'm certain that the appeal and possibly the timeframe being November, that there wasn't necessarily a fire to get the applications as long as it had been received prior to the season starting. But the point I wanted to make is that potentially 40,000 plants, let's just say a lot of plants, and no state licensing and no application from what I've received from the DCC to apply for those 40,000 plants. I'm very curious, but I'll just say it and leave it alone, curious where those plants went to, just because they had to go somewhere eventually. But I, I want to go back to the numbers. The numbers are a little bit everywhere. I have different numbers for the initial study than I do for the site maps, than I do for the presentation that we've received both today and from the planning commission. Both today and planning commission, same numbers were presented. And those numbers of the canopy specifically equals 15, but it's very different on the site maps, which the site map doesn't give us cultivation area, it just gives us canopy area. And so the initial study cultivation area is six acres. On our presentation, it's 5.09. Initial study cultivation area is 6.5, our presentation is 6.56. Initial study cultivation is 3.4, it's 1.45, and I'm going down A, B, C, D, E. The numbers are everywhere, and then on the site map, the initial study says 5.1, site map says 3.9. And the last one, which is Site E, initial study is 7.8, but the site map is 9.5. That's the one that kind of stands out as to what's going on. I get it that inside your application, it's stating you want flexibility and that the maximum will be 15 acres. But I'm just going to be honest with you, with the history of this site, I have no trust that that flexibility will be utilized in the best of ways. I would love to, for it to match what we're being presented today, which is Site A will be 4.07, Site B will be 5.25, Site C 1.16, so on and so forth, where our canopy does equal 15, and we know specifically where they will be. But when I see the initial study have certain numbers, the site map have certain numbers, and our presentation have different numbers altogether, it doesn't make me feel comfortable as to ensuring that I know what's happening where on that property and how we're even supposed to inspect it. It's nice to be able to inspect something and not have our, our team trying to figure out what flexibilities that you guys used this year. It's a whole lot easier if we can just say, hey, this is where you're supposed to be, and this is where you are. There was some in the site map, just to at least elaborate on that, where it looked like you had dots for where the plants should be, and it was inside the setbacks from the creek. I'd like to make sure that those are gone. It should be just a simple erase, erase mark, but for some reason, on the site map, it's still there, and that makes me, again, nervous. But between the issue of the violations, the issue of not even trying for the state license, I'm not going to bring up, because it's not a zoning issue, but not quite sure what happened with workers being found living in a ag exempt building. That, to me, is horrific. All of those things combined doesn't make me comfortable that the numbers are all over the place, and then add on to that, I have no idea what the true environmental impact of the grading is that you did, other than we tried to rectify it so that there would not be any further impact. Those are my main issues and my main reason for having concerns on this, and I want to wait further to have a, a conversation with the entire team rather than just three of us, apologize that there's only three of us. That definitely was not at all our intention ever during our meetings, but I think we need to have everybody's voice on this and everyone's understanding on this. But I still have concerns, and I've expressed myself thoroughly on what those concerns are.
All right. There any other comments from anyone? Yeah? All right, so is there anything else to add, Mr. Mole?
Well, the only thing I would add is this, and by the way, your concerns were echoed by staff with respect to the confusion. We've had actually different versions of the site plans produced at different times, which is not unusual when you're working on a big project and things change, and that has resulted in some confusion. County staff, community development department County staff, community development department staff wanted a definitive number. This is it. What you see, what has been presented to the county, this is what the cultivation and canopy areas will be. If there is a need to further revise the site plans and provide you with a level of confidence, we'll do that.
And in my opinion, I think knowing that what the initial study is based on is still where those footprints are for Site A through E would lead me to be more comfortable with the situation right now. Because the numbers are all over the place, are you still within that same footprint? Are you not within that same footprint? I'd like for all of that to match because to me, that's the way that it should work. I should be able to go from document to document and read the same thing, not shrink, grow, shrink, grow. That would make me feel better.
I just want to weigh in for a moment. I think the cultivation areas should pretty much remain the same. It was just the amount of canopy within each of those cultivation areas, which have always been these, you know, A through E is outlined on the map. And again, I can't say what iteration of the site plans you're looking at, but it was, the cultivation areas should be fairly consistent. It's the canopy within the cultivation areas because staff wanted clarification of how that 15 acres was going to come about rather than having that flexibility. They want a detail.
And some are close and some are not.
Is there anyone else that would, that you would like to speak on this before we move forward?
I think Brad has been trying to raise his hand. I'm not sure, Brad Johnson?
And there's a gentleman in the back. Okay. Okay. Then if you would like to come on the screen and, there he is. Okay.
Aye. Thank you again. My name is Brad Johnson. I'm Landes' attorney for the applicant. I wanted to address just a couple of points. One of the points I wanted to raise is that although it seems confusing, I know, but under SEQA, when looking at what is known as the environmental baseline for purposes of performing SEQA analysis, it's the actual existing physical conditions, even where those physical conditions are the result of illegal activities. So I wanted to just kind of point that out because the environmental analysis was performed after the grading violations, after the abatement activities. And so necessarily those activities were part of the environmental baseline. And there is, just for case reference on that, there are numerous cases. One of the most, I think, directly on point is River Watch, the county of San Diego. That's 76 Calup, 1428. So that's just an established kind of concept under SEQA that the baseline takes into account even conditions that have been, that are the result of illegal activities. So it's not accurate to say that the ISMD does not take that grading activity or the abatement activities into account. The second point I wanted to make is that.
Can I interrupt you with a question real quick?
In terms of, pardon?
Yes, we have a question.
Can I ask you a question related to that before you continue?
Sure.
Wasn't the initial study done in October 2019 or August 2019? I thought it was somewhere in 2019 and I thought the grading took place sometime in 2020.
The initial study wasn't circulated to the State Clearinghouse until, I think, October 2021, if I'm not mistaken.
But I believe the date of the initial study that was submitted to the CDD department was 2019? Am I, August 2019 or October 2019? It's right here. Let me open it up. You can keep going. Just wanted to add.
Yeah. But that is, the department did have an obligation to review that initial study and confirm that it was accurate at the time that it circulated to the State Clearinghouse. So for purposes of understanding the date of that environmental review, we take it as being the date that it was submitted to the State Clearinghouse, even if the bulk of it had actually been written into the ISMD form prior to that date. So.
And I stand corrected. It wasn't October 2020, it was October 2021.
Yeah. So the next point is that in terms of the violation and the abatement issue, there was an extensive effort by the applicant following discovery of these violations to work with staff in close communication and coordination with Mr. De León, with county council, with other staff members, in identifying how the situation could be abated, rectified, and how the applicant could return the site to a state of compliance. And the initial kind of thinking, the initial effort on that was to make sure that there was no long-term effect on the ability to obtain permits. But there was also hope early on that the early activation permit could be reinstated if the applicant cut ties with the operator that was out there and adequately addressed the violations. Ultimately, the department, I think correctly, made the decision that the early activation permit would not be reinstated. You know, sometimes there are real and lasting consequences and that was the consequence to the illegal activity. And so since that time, the abatement activities have been completed. That was confirmed by staff, as has been confirmed today. So I just wanted to kind of underscore that there was a significant effort by the applicant to address that issue and to make right what was done.
Thank you. Is there any, anything else you'd like to add or?
No, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right, from here. I think we've got your insight and answers. I don't know if there was any other questions from the appellant? I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, the appellant.
I guess the only question would be.
Can you come to the microphone then? Because I think what we'll do here is if we're finished, we'll carry this forward to next week. That way we can move forward and we'll deal with deliberation at that point.
Are we closing the public hearing or continuing?
Okay. We'll need a motion, date and time by motion is what's stated, so.
I guess my only question would be if we can have public comment at the continued hearing.
Yes.
I don't have a problem stopping where we're at.
Ms. Grant?
Well, if you're talking about the presentation of their cases during the appeal, if you're closing the public hearing, then no, it will just be your deliberations. If you're continuing the public hearing, then you can't pick and choose. Everyone who's a party will get another opportunity to speak.
How many people would want to be part of the public comment?
I, can I just ask a question first? So we have two supervisors that aren't here and they may have questions for the appellant and the applicant. So if we kept it open and they would have the opportunity to ask those questions, then I think that would be appropriate.
And then the folks that you're talking about would have their opportunity to speak as well.
Yeah, I think we might have had someone on Zoom, but I think they can speak next time due to the hour, as long as.
Yeah, we'll.
Except for the board.
I think that's the route we'll go. Yeah. And so with that, they'll have their opportunity to speak. And so we are going to go ahead and.
What's that? When?
Yeah, come back to the board and we'll decide on when that date is, if we know for a date certain. Ms. Grant? Right, right. So that's what we'll do is continue it to a date certain. So what do you think, Johanna?
Is there time?
Is there?
Next week is white, so I would. Yes.
Yes. The 10th at 9:45. All right, that looks like a good time and date. Thank you. We will need it by motion, yes.
I want to make sure that both the applicant and appellant, I don't know if there was a yes or no for that. I see one applicant saying yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Then, Mr. Chair, I move to continue this public hearing onto our May 10th agenda at 9:45 a.m.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And so thank you for that. We will see you next week at 9:45 on that item. And so with that, we will move on to, actually, do you need a break? Did you need a break?
Everybody needs a break.
Okay, so we will take a five-minute break. And then we'll come back to our 6.12.
All the banned stuff, contraband.
All right.
All right. Welcome back, everyone, from our break. We're gonna move on to our item 6.12, our consideration of presentations and updates of community efforts to include Risk Reduction Authority and California Wildfire Mitigation Program and Clear Lake Environmental Research Center and Tree Mortality Task Force and Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And this, we'll give this over to Supervisor Pyska.
So I want to thank everybody for hanging out a little bit longer than we anticipated.
And I want to apologize to everybody.
This is a culmination presentation of a lot of the work that we've been doing and I've been alluding to with you guys, so you get to hear some details. I am sorry that Supervisor Simon isn't here to join us today because this is really important work for both of us. So we have several presentations packed into 6.12, but we're gonna start with our Risk Reduction Authority presentation, which, oh, she has a little technical problem?
She seems to be on.
But I will say, a year ago, when Supervisor Simon and I came and approached the board for funding for the Risk Reduction Authority, we promised to do four updates a year, one per quarter. And the last one we did was in the fall. I would like to have consensus that we just continue to, every six months, because the work that we're doing is really long-term planning work and quarterly is a little too frequent to give adequate updates. So if we kind of do us, like, this is a perfect timing because it's Community Wildfire Preparedness Week. It's a great time to get, you know, in the mindset of fire season and the burn ban has been put in place and then follow up again in the fall with the work that we've done over the summer. So, good, good with that?
I think that the work that you and Supervisor Simon are doing are much more long-term plans and every quarter asking you to give us an update. We don't want to force you to say something just because you have to. I think that a planning for what's coming up and then like a debriefing of what may have occurred every six months is perfectly fine for me.
Okay, great. And we have a couple of members here today with our fire chiefs. So I will pass it over to Tammy Alexey, who is our Risk Reduction Authority Coordinator through NCO. So she's gonna do a presentation on everything we've been working on.
Well, that's, I got the text. She's having technical challenges, but sorted out.
Tammy?
Did she make it back on?
There she is. She's unmuting now.
Okay.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm gonna try to share my screen now.
That's a pretty cool logo.
That was your work.
I know.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity to be able to share an update for the Risk Reduction Authority, May 2022. So since, in the last six months, the Board of Directors has increased from an eight-board member to a 15-board member. We have increased with adding the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport, also the water districts, and tribal groups. We have come together to have a CMAT reporting committee that is working on a three-part workshop coming up in June to address the outcomes of the CMAT report that was done last May. We are also, have formed a Grants Best Fit Team, which is, it was formed because of the fact that the four of Lake County organizations or agencies were all working on one grant and there were only going to be five grants granted within the whole state of California. So we decided that we better do something so that we can at least try to have, try to be one of the participants for those grants. So at those Best Fits Grants meetings, we look at who's interested in applying, who's eligible to apply, who's the best fit to apply, what, what would be the best path to apply? Would it be joint application? And also, we've found that it's a great resource for letters of support. This is just a sample of a weekly spreadsheet that goes out that tells about the grants that are up and it's sent to all of the team members. We meet on the third Thursday of every month and if you're interested, just shoot me an email and we will make sure that you get on that invite list. We also have a Tree Mortality and Forest Health Task Force now. There was a virtual town hall on March 10th and we are meeting monthly and more updates to come later in this presentation. And now for my favorite part. We had an AmeriCorps team here, in CCC AmeriCorps team, that was here for two months. And these are just some of the statistics that they brought to the county. 1,263 Ready For Everything engagements in 15 neighborhoods around the county. These engagements were done, they took out the orange backpacks, as many people saw, and were able to help people become more prepared. And because of that effort, thousands of people now know their zone. Do you know yours? Community.zonehaven.com if you don't. And last but not least, here are just some pictures of them getting their work done. The top left-hand corner, they're doing some work, some mitigation work up on Cobb. They were able to go to Calpine and tour Calpine. In the middle top, that's the team leader doing the canvassing that I was talking about, helping with CC4C to help beautify our area, helping to put covers on greenhouses. The top right, where the guy is looking kind of funny, he is actually getting low and go for Pedro presentation, part of the Red Cross curriculum that's done in the schools that they did a couple of presentations for. Getting to the middle left-hand side, they were all cert-trained. They worked with hospice. The middle picture is Apples with AmeriCorps, an event that we did to try to, just when they first arrived, to introduce them to the communities. That was one of the presentations that, with all the kids. Next was another mitigation photo. And then the bottom row at the castle. And then middle bottom row is the Tango Mike event. They helped out with that and gardening and much, much more. And last but not least, here is my contact information if you need to get ahold of me. And as I said, there's several others that are presenting after me that will go into more detail about some of the things that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. So I just want to touch on a couple of the things that she brought up. So we increased the membership like she mentioned. And it, like, bringing more and more partners to the table and having these discussions means more synergy. And it's been really exciting at these last, meetings over the last year as more and more people have come together. It's a lot more participation with tribal environmental leaders and bringing Tara in and just, a lot has been happening. And expanding those seats was really necessary, necessary part of that. So that's been exciting. The CMAT Committee update, which she mentioned, you know, last year, a lot of us participated in that last May. It was a two-week intensive program. And they gave us a report and they had recommendations. And so we're having two more workshops later in June to kind of follow up on those recommendations, continuing building out our collaborative with all of our stakeholders. So that's another exciting step forward. So we're just, you know, we're building something important and valuable and the, the building process is just as valuable, is just as valuable as, as the end process. Because, you know, that's how we're getting the commitments from everybody around, getting everybody's input. So it's, it, if you're, if we reach out to you, I think we're looking for about 40 stakeholders to join the, the workshops in June. Please take advantage of that because that's just gonna move us further and further forward. And then the Best Fits Grants. We, we were doing it every other week for a while because there are so many groups going after grants. We didn't want to be competing with each other and we wanted to support each other. So just developing that process has been really beneficial for everybody. So big props to Tammy and Angelina for kind of guiding the RRA this last year and looking forward to much more to come in the years. We're just getting better and stronger and broader. So the next presentation is the California Wildfire Mitigation Program.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Robyn Barra and I'm the Director of Community Projects at North Coast Opportunities. And I'm here today to talk to you about the California Wildfire Mitigation Program or the Lake County Home Hardening Initiative. And I know it's been a long afternoon for you all, but this is a really exciting project that's going to bring millions of dollars into our community to support local home hardening efforts. Before I jump into the presentation, please let me explain to you that this project is very much in its infancy stage, but it's such a big and exciting project that we wanted to be here today to let you know some of the things that have been happening so far. Next slide, please. So, Lake County was selected as one of three demonstration communities by CALOES and CAL FIRE after conducting a statewide analysis including fire risk, climate change risk factors, and census data. NCO was then selected as the program operator due to our experience with the RRA, wildfire recovery, mitigation, and preparedness, as well as our experience running construction programs. In December, a group of representatives from CALOES and CAL FIRE visited Lake County and joined Supervisor Simon and Pyska and representatives from NCO for a field visit. And you can see that photo in the top right corner there. Several Lake County's neighborhoods were toured and evaluated and Kelseyville Riviera was deemed the best fit for this pilot project. The reason why the Riviera, or the Riv, was chosen is because it met some key criteria. So number one, the housing density in the Riviera is optimal for achieving the cluster resiliency strategy we are aiming to achieve. When one home is hardened, all surrounding properties benefit. Hardening homes in close proximity to one another is key to maximizing the benefits of our hardening efforts. Two, we anticipate the population will meet the low-to-moderate income threshold. At least 70% of approved home sites must be at or below moderate income. Three, homes in this area are more likely to support the types of retrofit measures the program will support. Most of the homes in this neighborhood were constructed within a relatively narrow timeframe, meaning upgrades would be similar across properties. And four, we anticipate strong homeowner participation due to the ongoing work of the HOA and our current focus on defensible space for residents. As we learn and build out the framework for this pilot project, we are hopeful to expand this project to other areas within the county. Other areas in Lake County could be eligible once the program has been fully developed. Our commitment is to complete 25 homes in year one, 100 homes in year two, and 375 homes in year three for a total of 500 homes. Because we were chosen as a demonstration community, we are receiving considerable support from our state partners at CALOES. We are very grateful for them. This support includes help while we develop our HMGP sub-application for FEMA as well as a robust and comprehensive training package. Next slide, please. Our program is designed to be efficient, making it really easy, making it as easy as possible for homeowners while really targeting vulnerable populations within the project area. Here are some of the key features that really set this program apart. The intention is to provide service on behalf of homeowners who might otherwise be unable to safeguard their home due to capacity issues. This could be financial, physical, social, even emotional. Case management will be a critical component of this process from the beginning. Homeowners will have no guesswork as to which measures to perform. Our team will provide a home assessment, which will inform which measures can be eligible. Homeowners do not need to coordinate with contractors. No negotiation, no negotiating on scope of work, on pricing. Our team will do all the contractor coordination and management. We may provide up to $40,000 to perform site work on eligible structures. Homeowners will not need to come up with cash and wait for reimbursement or rebate for a portion of the work. And the cost share for homeowners at or below moderate income will be zero. Next slide, please. So I kindly remind you that we are in the very, very early stages of this project, but here is how we project the local life cycle to look. So it starts with homeowner outreach to the Kelseyville Riviera. Hopefully, we get a good amount of applications back and then we can approve those applications fairly quickly. Once applications are approved, that will then trigger the home assessment. Home assessors will be on staff with NCO and they will be trained to use an application designed by CAL FIRE. They will go to the home site, use this app, and that, through that app, they will do the home assessment, which will then trigger a site-specific scope of work, which will also alert us to any potential environmental health concerns. Once that scope of work is finalized, we can create a contract with our procured construction contractor and begin site work. Site work goes underway. It hopefully goes well. It's finished. NCO, with the contractor and homeowner, go back out to the site, confirm that everything was completed according to the scope of work. We do a final walkthrough and a closeout. And the last piece of it will be a homeowner maintenance agreement. So when the work is complete, we are asking every homeowner to sign a 20-year commitment that they will maintain the measures we have completed. Next slide, please. Cost share, what is this gonna cost our homeowners? That is always the big question. So working with the median income of $70,700, a family of four, if you look at that pink moderate income column, a family of four making $84,850 or less would have zero cost share. So again, up to $40,000 in approved measures at no cost to the homeowner. If that family of four falls between $84,850 and $141,400, they would have a 10% cost share, so $4,000 should we expend it all, expend the full $40,000. If they're above that $141,400, they would have a 25% cost share. What's important to note here is the priority focus is to target and support those homeowners at or below moderate income, so that pink column. We're working to achieve a threshold of 70%, meaning at least 70% of our approved home sites must be at or below moderate income. Next slide, please. Homeowner eligibility. So step one, you have to live, or the home has to be within the Kelseyville Riviera jurisdiction. Stick-built homes and mobile homes are eligible. It does not have to be the homeowner's primary residence. Homeowners can apply for more than one home in the project area. They do not have to be a U.S. citizen. They must provide proof of property ownership prior to your tax returns and identity documentation. And income eligibility is dependent on the homeowner's income, not the renter, not whoever is residing there, but the income of the homeowner. Next slide, please. So a very brief sampling of some of the defensible space activities. Removal of dead and dying trees and branches, replacement of combustible fencing and gates, creation of vertical space, creation of effective horizontal space, and then removal of any dead and dying debris and fuels. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, just a brief sampling. Next slide, please. And the same with our retrofit measures, not an exhaustive list. But some of the things we can do are recover roofs with Class A resistant materials. We can install metal vents and flashing. We can add non-combustible metal screens and weather stripping. We can install double-pane windows and tempered windows. We can close and plug holes. We can replace exterior wall cover. We can replace exterior wall covering with non-combustible materials. And we can install non-combustible serving on mobile homes. Next slide. A couple of really key considerations. Eligible measures have been informed by the latest in fire science research to mitigate against ember, radiant heat, and flame vulnerabilities. Defensive space measures will be required before retrofit measures, so it all starts with that deep space. Not a menu. This is not a menu for homeowners to pick and choose the measures they want to do. That home assessment, again, done by NCO staff, will spit out the required measures that must be completed first. Should there be room left in that home site budget and there's additional measures to complete, we may do those as well, but we have to do the required measures first. Some potential barriers. Anytime you launch a new project, you always have to plan for a few barriers, and one of those is going to be managing homeowner expectations. That starts with a really robust communication strategy throughout the Kelseyville Riviera. There could be measures requiring a building permit which can't be issued. We don't know that yet. There could be unknown delays with environmental clearance. And then there could be homeowners who are potentially unwilling to perform some of the measures. So we are looking into those barriers and figuring out the best strategies to overcome them as we move forward. Next slide, please. Current status of the project. So we know that NCO will serve as the program operator. We have submitted our Hazard Mitigation Subgrant to FEMA, which combines with our hard and soft costs, a total budget of about $22 million. Pretty exciting. And just as exciting is CalOES is providing the match requirement for us, which comes in at about $5.5 million. We have applied for, and we've been awarded, an advanced grant, that's about $230,000, to continue our planning efforts, build out our project team, and create a communication strategy, and then of course, complete our trainings. It's important to note that the project is not fully funded by FEMA yet. We are funded through that advanced grant, but we cannot earn our full award until we get through the environmental clearance stage, which is where we're at now. The good news is that FEMA is really supportive of the project, so much so that they have awarded CalOES those advanced funds, which in turn, CalOES has sub-granted to us. So we are in good shape and things do look very positive, but I want to be very clear that the project is not fully funded quite yet. Next slide. Next steps. So over the next few months, NCO will continue our planning efforts with CalOES and project partners. That includes the onboarding of key project staff. We're writing job descriptions. We're hiring. We're getting people placed. We do have a couple of staff people already placed. We're also securing adequate equipment. That's not really easy right now with all the supply chain issues we're facing. We have to make sure we have the proper tools for our home assessments and other equipment. We're currently training project staff on various items, namely how to review and process applications, complete those home assessments, and use technologies specifically designed for the program. Very soon, we'll start procuring key resources, like our subject matter experts, to ensure compliance with environmental and historic preservation project conditions for each home site. We will soon begin procuring contractors. We want them ready to perform that work as soon as our FEMA funds arrive. And we are developing, or in the beginning stages of developing outreach materials and coordinating the launch in Kelseyville Riviera. Next slide. So this is what we project our first-year timeline to look like. Through winter and into spring, we've been building capacity at the local level, writing those grants, fitting our partners in place. We hope that by late summer, we can open our application portal and begin accepting homeowner applications. We hope that we'll be awarded our FEMA funds by fall, and then we can begin swinging hammers and actually doing the exciting work we all want to see. And then this time next year, we'll begin scaling up, onboarding more project staff, ensuring that we have everything in place to meet our second year goals. All of that being said, there's a couple of things to note. This timeline is really contingent upon FEMA. We don't know when that award will arrive. We think it will arrive in the fall. We're hopeful it will. But what's important for you to know is that we cannot break ground. We can't swing hammers. We can't move the dirt around until that FEMA, it funds, are awarded. So we're really at the mercy of them in that way. And that being said, we want to strategically open our application system in a way that doesn't lose momentum. If we open that application portal too soon and our homeowners are sitting around waiting for months and months and months, that could impact the reputation of the project and we could lose momentum. So we're very strategically piecing together a timeline that will keep us moving as quickly as possible, not get us too far ahead of the game, and that could, you know, have a negative impact on the project. And so in closing, I will remind you that the project is a three-year period completing 500 homes, 25 homes in year one, 100 in year two, and 375 in year three in the Kelseyville Riviera project area. But the clock won't actually start until we have a better idea of when those FEMA funds will arrive. Next slide, and that is about it. Again, I'm Robyn Barra, Director of Community Projects for NCO. This is the California Wildfire Mitigation Program, Lake County Home Hardening. Miranda Gardino is seated. She is project staff, and she's our project coordinator three. Should you have questions that arise, feel free to hit us up at that Home Hardening and NCO, Inc. email address. And I have a couple of wonderful partners here today from CalOES. I believe we have Lisa, Jennifer, and Jacey, and we are ready to take your questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Robyn. As you can see, we're, we're really excited about this program. This is an amazing opportunity that we were selected by, by CalOES to, to pilot this program with two other counties. They've been holding our hands. We've been having weekly meetings since December. We're all committed to the success of this program. But we're, you know, but we're realistic about, about how large this program is. So we want to make sure as we go along, we're, we're being strategic and methodical. So that's why Robyn laid out this timeline, and I would like to welcome our OES guests here if they have anything to add, or if anybody has questions.
Thanks, Supervisor. I'll let CalOES speak if they want to speak first.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. This is Jen Hogan. I'm the Assistant Director for Hazard Mitigation at CalOES. I don't know that I have anything to add to what Robyn already shared. She did a great job of framing our, our project to date. I think in terms of setting the expectations with FEMA approval, I did just want to add, you know, we have been working with our FEMA partners since September on the development of this program. They know that this is a priority and have been working in lockstep with us to develop this framework as well and to establish all of the environmental clearances. So we are confident that while Robyn's correct, we can't do anything until we get our FEMA funding, we, we know that that is forthcoming very soon, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatia.
So, wonderful program. I, I understand my colleague from the city of Clear Lake who's bummed that the city of Clear Lake was not chosen as a pilot program for this because this is what every community needs. So, my question is, what are the, because it's talking about moderate income in that area, $70,000. I, I want to check in, what's the equity that's built in to ensure that a good cross-section of that community is going to be assisted, rather than those that have a higher level of ability to access these types of programs, or higher level of ability to connect for those types of programs? Just want to make sure that there's an equity portion that's built in for this.
Thanks, Supervisor. I'm going to ask Jacey Hyde, our Hazard Mitigation Branch Chief, to field that one.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. That's a really great question, and it's something that we are extremely concerned about, making equity a priority in this program. Our entire program has really been designed with the equity components in mind, that we are creating this program to assist low-to-moderate-income homeowners. And so, a couple of safeguards that are put in. We're requiring in our demonstration communities that at least 70% of the awardee, the homeowners who participate in this program are below that threshold. The reason that there is some wiggle room to include higher-income folks is because we all know wildfire is contagious, and if you harden one home, but you don't harden the home next to it, if that unhardened home catches fire, it could ultimately still spread to that hardened home. So because we know that some of these communities are, are mixed income, we want to make sure that we can get to that fully hardened state and that we provide incentives for those commute, for those individuals who are, maybe don't meet the low-income thresholds. But we really do intend to focus this entire, as much as possible, on those low-to-moderate-income families who don't have the resources to do this themselves. And that includes the streamlining efforts that Robyn talked about earlier, such as cutting, this, this program is not a reimbursement basis. The, the homeowners don't have to come out of pocket. The funding gets put straight to the contractors, really reducing that contractor burden, and then prioritizing those homeowners, particularly at the beginning of the program. We will strive to meet that 70% metric before we even start letting other folks into the program.
I really appreciate that. I figured, it says Cal in front of your agency's name, that you wouldn't come up with anything like this without an equity portion to it. I just wanted to hear about it. I think it's important. I mean, on the vice versa, people who have access to resources can do the home hardening potentially on their own, or again, have easier access to these types of programs, but making sure that the others in between also have access. It goes both ways. And I think everyone in our communities are going to want to try and access this, and again, wanting to replicate this so that we can get it into other communities. So I think this is an enormous amount of money coming into our community that will be helpful in making sure that we're, we're better protected. It does, it's not 100%, but it's a better protection plan compared to what we've had before, and let's hope that FEMA gets us those funds.
So we didn't do public comment for the first presentation or this one, and we have still a few more with this item. Do you want to separate it out and have public comment now or at the end, or?
That's up to your board. There's no requirement that you do it at any time until the end before your board takes any action or gives direction as to the items.
We'll do it that way. Then we'll continue.
Want to go through all of them?
Right.
Okay. That's fine.
Sorry if I made a comment.
No, it's great. We're excited. Okay. So the next, we are going to hear from Clerk.
I'm Will Evans.
Good afternoon, everybody. Will Evans, Executive Director of the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. Clerk, as we go by in the community. I don't have a really lengthy presentation today, just wanted to give an update on our big projects. And then Christina, our Civic Spark fellow, is going to discuss our new projects dashboard, which we just launched yesterday. So, starting about 2019, and I, just following up, I've updated this board, I think it was last spring sometime, about some of our grant projects. So, just picking up from there, we've continued to strive to do landscape-scale restoration projects focusing on the vegetation management side of forest health and fire resilience. And I got to say, I'm pretty pumped about that last presentation because one of the big concerns I have is that we spend a lot of time focusing on managing the vegetation and the fuel breaks, but at the end of the day, a lot of the best actions that can be taken are right there at your house by the individuals. So it's glad to, I'm glad to see we're kind of coalescing around all the, all the options here and organizing to implement them. So one of the questions that's come up, you know, over the last three years, we've managed to get several large grants from CAL FIRE covering thousands of acres and millions of dollars, and we're in the process of rolling these out. And, you know, people ask for updates of, well, how many acres have you done? And where is the projects happening? And it's kind of gotten to the point that, which is a good thing, that I can't just rat off the top of my head the stats, because there's so many stats to rat off. So we created this dashboard that Christina's done, and she's going to kind of walk you through it for a second.
Yeah, so I just wanted to do a quick walkthrough to make sure that everybody knows how to use it.
Christina, can you give your first name and last name?
Yes. My name's Christina Linder. So just to start, I want to point out, like, right now, the screen, it's kind of hard to see everything, so you can expand all of these different features over here, in the top right of each of these boxes. But I want to just start with this map to show how that works. So we have all of the project areas that Clerk Grants have covered, and you can move around and zoom in and search for different addresses up here. Look at the layer, or look at the legend to see what the different colors mean, and they indicate different phases. It's a bit hard to read from here, but there's environmental review, implementation, and monitoring. And then over here, you can change the base map if you'd prefer to see it on, like, a street view instead of the imagery. But you can click each of these project areas, and a pop-up will come up with the grant that that specific polygon or treatment area is a part of, the project name, the current phase, which again, goes with the color, and then the acreage, the project type, and the project activity. And so each of these treatment areas all have a pop-up like that. And then the one exception that's a little bit different is this large area, which is the South Lake Fire Safe Council boundary where the chipping program goes on that Clerk is helping fund. So that shows that, I think it's 930 acres or so, or 950 within this area. So that's the map. And then, just to give a bit more context of the phase descriptions, you can go to this tab over here, and you can read about what each of those phases mean. And then, one other feature too, is if you scroll over, like, the bar graph, there's pop-ups that come up here that show more specific acreage and the grant types that cover this acreage over here for the project-type breakdowns. And then here too, you can scroll through the different progresses of the grants. So here's the fire prevention grant progress, the forest health grant progress, and the Harbin Hot Springs grant pot progress. And then, over here as well, you can see the total acres included in grants, the total monitored acres, the total acres being implemented, and then the acres that are currently under environmental review. So I think that's everything, and then we plan on sort of updating all of this information as we update our data sets and everything. And then we also hope to make it more accessible to mobile devices as well.
Yeah, so this is still very much the preliminary phase. We just launched this yesterday, and if anybody wants to take a look, you can get to it on the Clerk website, clerk.co, that's C-L-E-R-C dot C-O. And, you know, one of the bugs we noticed right off, it does not load very well on mobile devices. So the best way to see it is on your desktop computer at home. One of the things I did want to highlight, a couple of our projects we've completed in the last 12 months, which is always being Wildfire Preparedness Week, I always like to look at what we've done to prepare, and it kind of makes me feel a little bit better. So kind of picking up on where the, the previous presentation discussed, the, the home hardening program's going to occur in this neighborhood here. So we've been working, right now, our contractors are out re-establishing the fuel breaks around the Kelseyville Riviera using a combination of hand crews and heavy equipment. And over here in the Riviera West and Riviera Heights neighborhood, we've worked with the HOAs over there. It's been a great collaboration where they've helped us find contractors to do this work, which is right in their backyard, so it helps streamline the process. So we completed this last year, and it's still looking in good shape for, for this year, although I've already kind of planned in my mind that in the next 12 months or so, we're going to be going after more funding to, to keep it that way. that in the next 12 months or so, we're going to be going after more funding to keep it that way. Going over to the city of Clear Lake area, this is the, what's known as the Davis Fuel Break, which was completed about this time last year. It was last May and June. This was a collaborative effort involving the Bureau of Land Management, the county, and two private landowners. And this, I always like to show this as a great example of how we really fast-track projects because this thing had been discussed for years. And then it kind of came on Clerk's radar at the end of 2020. And then we looked at, you know, how we could get this done before last fire season. And everybody got together through, you know, federal agencies. And Lars and Anita with the county helped getting the rights of entry signed for the landfill property. And we really helped get this happen, you know, very quickly. So I've been pleased with that and impressed. And I think several of the officials at the state BLM office are pretty pleased as well. Another area where we're doing a ton of work that's kind of just started is up in the hills above Lucerne. A lot of these red areas, this is with our Forest Health Grant that was awarded last year. But we actually put the application together in 2019. So it got delayed for a year because of the pandemic. But we're still very much committed to doing the project. And currently, it's in environmental review. So we've been doing botanical surveys and owl surveys and cultural resource review. And targeted to have that done by September timeframe. And then hopefully, this work can start on the ground, maybe at the tail end of this fire season. A couple of other project areas, this is over in West Scotts Valley. This is known as the West Scotts Valley Fuel Break. It's a series of fuel breaks that were cut during the river fire in 2018. And then we worked with a landowner to maintain those last summer. So those have been re-established. We also have some work planned under the Forest Health Grant, the Benmore Valley area. And then one of the main focuses of the last couple of months with us has been dealing with the tree mortality on the Cobb Mountain area. So the orange areas are our fire prevention grant, Fox Drive area, hazard tree abatement projects. So up to this point, I think we've taken out about 300 trees in this area. And then we've contracted to take out another 300 trees here on Siegler Mountain that are all around the communication facility on top of the mountain. So working to deal with removal of the trees that have died all over the county the last year or so. It's been real sad to watch, but I've been thankful that we have some funding to help address that and help make it a little safer for this fire season. And then the last project I want to highlight is one that we've just completed, and we can check it off as done, which this is the Harbin Hot Springs Forest Health Grant, originally applied for in 2017. And then we spent about three years doing the work, on and off, through different pandemics and things. And we finally wrapped it up and have a closed-out grant with CAL FIRE as of last month. So that one totals, I think, 991 acres there. So, and multiples of these project areas are included in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So that was kind of how we steered our work and decided where we were going to do it. It was kind of looking at these documents and things the community has known for years. Just take that and pick it up and run with it. So that is all we have. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to field them. Or save it for the end, if that's what we're doing.
Doesn't matter to me. I might get mucky with all the questions at the end, but...
Just a quick question. Since you've already taken trees out, and this is definitely a tree mortality question as well, what are you doing with the trees that you're taking out? Is there a specific location for biomass?
We'll get to that.
Okay. Never mind.
All right. We're going to have the questions at the end, so we'll make sure to call you. Okay, all right.
Well, thank you so much, Clerk. It just amazes me how much we've been able to do as a collaborative. And that's why all these items are together in the same item because this is everything that the Risk Reduction Authority is supporting, right? What we learned in the CMAT last year is that we're the support piece for all of this work. And so, you know, we're talking about a lot of different things, but everything here is supported through the RRA and all the partners and all the stakeholders. And so I want to thank you so much. I want to thank you with the proclamation, but I cannot show my gratitude enough for all of you.
Thanks, we really appreciate it. And one of the things I have to say is I've, you know, our community has gotten so good at responding to fires when they happen. And I'm excited to see that we're starting to get that same level of coordination with dealing with the fires before they happen, which is really where we need to be. So exciting times for sure.
All right, so next, we're going to be, we have a two-part presentation for the Tree Mortality Task Force. So Dr. Mike Jones is going to present first, and then I have a few slides afterward. We'll kind of talk on the issue that you brought up.
Maybe that might be a little too much of a question, but it was right there.
It's right there.
Great, well, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Crandall and Supervisor. Thank you for having me. My name is Michael Jones. I am the University of California Cooperative Extension Forest Advisor for Mendocino Lake and Sonoma Counties. I'm also one of the founding members of the CISA side, the Lake County Prescribed Burn Association. So if we have time to talk about what we're doing there as well at some point, I'd like to mention that too. So I'm here right now to talk about the mortality that we're observing in the county. And this is not just the county, this is regional. It's rather extensive, and we'll kind of get into what's going on. And really, this is in response to, you know, what kind of, what Supervisor Pascua was really interested in understanding what's going on and what can we do about it. So I'm here to just kind of, excuse me, present the biology and the ecology of what's going on and kind of our management options to help with, you know, as clerks doing their work and as you're pursuing more resources to deal with the issue, kind of what the strategies are for managing bark beetle outbreaks, which essentially with the CISA, landscape-level outbreak of native bark beetles. So, you know, I'm an entomologist by training. I specialize in forest health. My whole career's been on integrated pest management. And so it's always crucial to contextualize what we're dealing with. I know we see dead trees, and that's what we're focused on. And that's certainly the point of why we're here. But we need to frame this in a way that we recognize that it's not just a one-off, we're seeing dead trees. It's a much more complex issue in forest health that we're dealing with. And so it's not just about dealing with trees. Certainly is, there is priority, short-term goals of dealing with the dead trees and the dying trees. But it's thinking about the holistic approach to forest management for itself and how we manage our forests to prevent outbreaks like this from occurring again. So three key things here. Forests are dynamic. I know we see green trees. It seems static, but there's chaos. They're just crazy places. Disturbances are important, right? And disturbances, a huge drain now is drought. We know drought's really an incredibly important part of what's driving the current issue and what's a huge factor in forest health in general. And then fire. Fire is a really important one here, right? We're in a fire-adapted ecosystem. It's crucial, a disturbance that has shaped, really, it's shaped the way the forests and the vegetation in California look today. And then lastly is, dead trees are important. Actually, they're really crucial parts of the forest ecosystem. And so it's not that we're, you know, or I'm suggesting that we need to get rid of all the dead trees. We need dead trees in landscape. They have very, very important roles and a lot of different reasons that we could spend all day talking about. But the point is that we're not trying to eliminate dead trees off the landscape. We're trying to manage the issues that are causing excessive amounts of dead trees and how to get back to a state of more, it's not equilibrium, but more of a healthy condition in which the forests are sustainable and resilient to these disturbances that we're dealing with right now. And so what happens is when you have a series of disturbances, right? So I'll talk about in a second of what kind of a very simplified version of the outbreak dynamic. What happens is your disturbances align, right? Fire's always going to occur. Drought is always going to occur. But what happens when they align is you get these landscape-level mortality events. And what's driving it is not the insects themselves, but it's disturbances that have created the conditions in which the trees are stressed, and they're more vulnerable to these insects and diseases. And so that's how you get from individual trees across the forest dying, which is important, to pockets of mortality, and then landscape-level mortality. And this is a classic picture, the inset in the upper left. And I love this picture because, right, what we're seeing, this mortality, is attributed to an insect the size of a matchhead, right? So that's really what we're seeing, is these tiny insects have this incredible power to affect our forest ecosystems and us in turn. And like I said, it's not specific to Lake County, right? This is regional. So we're seeing mortality, significant mortality events at an unusual time. Typically, we see the most mortality occur in late summer, early fall, when trees are most water-stressed because of the drought, of the dry season. We started observing significant mortality early in the spring, over winter this year. I know Supervisor Pascua, you just did a second aerial dissection survey with CAL FIRE. And even since the last one, which was a month ago, it's probably tripled. And unfortunately, I'm going to hypothesize that by the end of the summer, we're going to see a tenfold increase or more mortality. So it's not going to get any better in the short term. Unless we're going to get a lot of rain over the summer, which would help a lot, but...
Keep pushing.
So how do we get from individual trees to landscape-level mortality? Here's the basic kind of, this is a simplified model. I tried to make it really simple and with lots of little, well, I think they're cute, but you can make up your own mind. What happens is we have a disturbance we have when it comes through. Fire is unfortunately a very common disturbance in Lake County. Insects, forest pests love fire-stressed trees. That's their role. As the insect in the forest ecosystem, their role is to recycle dead, dying trees, recycle that nutrients back into the ecosystem, to facilitate and help open up the forest structure for regeneration. They're food, they're incredibly important food source for woodpeckers and all kinds of wildlife. They create habitat trees, all kinds of fun stuff. But anyway, insects are doing their job. They're culling out, removing dead, dying trees from the forest, recycling those nutrients. But what happens is when you have fire, now you have trees that are infested. So you've created, we call it infestation, you've created localized populations of your bark beetles, right? I won't go into this too deep, but bark beetles individually are not a serious threat. It's because they attack in, they call it mass attack. They attack in numbers, and they feed on trees in numbers. Now you have, you're increasing your localized bark beetle populations. When you have drought stress, now you've created trees that otherwise in unhealthy situations would be resilient to the bark beetles that are attacking your fire-stressed trees. But because we're in drought stress and a lot of other predisposing conditions, historically poor forest management practices, absence of fire suppression of fire, poor land management or no management, we've created really stressed, unhealthy forest conditions. And now the bark beetles are spreading to those drought-stressed trees. And now exponential growth. Every female lays 30 eggs. Half of those are females. You have thousands of beetles infesting a single tree. You can see the numbers add up very quickly. Now you start to spread across the landscape. We call it mass attacking, as I mentioned. Here, you see these are called pitch tubes. That's the main defensive conifers, is the water in their phloem. They literally use it to push with their sap the bark beetles out of the tree. That's why when they're drought stressed, they're more susceptible to insects because their main mechanism of defense is physical expulsion from the tree. So when a bark beetle attacks a healthy tree, it gets literally encased and pushed out of the tree by the sap. But when they're not producing sap, the bark beetles can easily attack. And then they call in all their friends and they mass attack. And so you see these mass-attack pitch tubes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
With the warmer weather, are you seeing more life cycles than...?
That's a really good point. So these bark beetles have multiple life cycles. And if we're in the Sierra, for example, they have a dormancy through the winter. They go into a hibernation, if you will, like a torp. And they're, they're, they kind of hang out and wait till it warms back up, and then bam, they take off. For us, because we've been so warm lately, we're not really seeing a dormancy anymore. And they're actually getting like another full generation in some instances, or even a half-cycle generation, meaning that their numbers are growing even faster than traditionally expected. So what happens is the beetles infest the tree. They feed on the tree. These are called galleries or the feeding structure. The galleries are in the cambium or the outer bark, or, excuse me, the outer wood right under the bark. When they feed all the way around the main stem of a tree, we call that girdling. And that basically suffocates, it starves the tree to death, right? It can't transpire water. It can't pull nutrients out of the canopy. The tree starves to death. And then you see it slowly go from a healthy green, yellow, to the brown when it's dead. Right, so now you've started killing trees in a small region. And now the bark beetles, because there's lots and lots of them, they're competing, they're dispersing across the landscape. And now we've created the conditions for a landscape of outbreak. And that's currently where we're at right now. It's not quick. It takes several years. So I've been tracking this mortality for at least three years now with the expectation, knowing that we're going to get to this point. So it's something that we can kind of see coming. But it's hard to proactively manage that because it's hard to convince people, like, if you don't do something right now, you're going to have millions of dead trees. And we know this because we have already been through this in Sierra, where we saw it coming, and we tried to do the best we could, but it just isn't enough. So what are the, I'm not going to go too deep, but I just want to show you what particular insects we're dealing with right now. These are very common. They're all native, which is important, right? We're not dealing with invasive insects that are creating unhealthy or that are killing healthy trees, taking advantage of the ecosystem. These are native pests doing their natural cycle of working in the forest. Western pine beetle in our ponderosa, red turpentine. As you can see, a lot is a generalist. These are all in pine. Ips species, you know, the bark beetles, these are about a match head. These are even cuter and smaller. They're, you know, a couple of millimeters. They all attack pines and firs. And what's particularly tricky with the ips is that they can infest the vegetative waste material, so the slash, if you will, the material that we create from thinning and managing forests, infest the slash if it's not dealt with, and then reinfect healthy living trees or living trees. And so they're a pretty problematic species to work with. So that's something that we certainly have to think about. And managing these systems is dealing with the material that we're creating from active management. And then in our dug fur, we have flat fur bore and dug fur engraver. So this is a suite of insects. Some of them are very specific to individual hosts, but a lot of them are generalists, and we see them concurrently attacking the same trees. So how do we manage for bark beetles? You know, unfortunately, with the current infestation, it's going to run its course. And what I mean by that is there's not really anything we can do at this point, right? Their numbers are exponential. There's millions of them on the landscape. There's millions of stressed trees. They're just going to run their course until environmental conditions become more favorable, meaning we have good precipitation, it cools down over the winter. They run out of host material, which is very commonly what happened with the Sierra infestation, is we had a nice return of precipitation, the drought kind of ended, and they literally killed most of the trees that they were feeding on. And so we're kind of in that phase that we're going to see this continue for a couple of years until they essentially run out of food. And then they disperse or their populations collapse. There's also predators that take, that kind of built like that predator-prey curve that you see as the bark beetle populations build up. Their predators build up and help kind of suppress the growth. But at this point, it's an incredible population density that we're dealing with. So for management, what we're looking at is, it's not impossible. There are management things that we can do to kind of mitigate the impact. And especially when we're thinking about communities and high-value resources and high-value trees, we can certainly prioritize our efforts on those trees. But it's always an integrated approach, meaning there's no one right solution. We're dealing with a lot of different tools here. We're using them together, and we're using them smartly so that we're not creating additional problems and that we're actually solving the problems. With the areas that experience a lot of mortality, really, it's just about dealing with the hazards. It's really about removing dead trees that present hazards either because they can hurt people or structures over their wildfire risk, and it's fuels reduction. So removing the trees from landscape for fire safety. When we're talking about management of bark beetles themselves, so this is purely just managing a fuel and a risk, right? This is not about removing dead trees, it isn't about controlling the bark beetle populations. When we're dealing with the bark beetle populations, what we're really interested in is removing the trees that are currently infested and dying. That's where all your bark beetles, so here in this little graphic, here's our dead trees. There's no bark beetles there. We're not really worried about them from an infestation or management perspective for controlling bark beetle populations. What we're worried about is these trees that are just newly infested, that are just starting to show signs of decline and that are just starting to die. That's where all your bark beetle populations are. And so that's where, if you really want to mitigate or slow down the rate of spread, that's the trees that we need to be thinking about removing in addition to fire risk. We can't remove all the trees off the landscape. That's, there's just going to be dead trees out there. So maybe we have to strategize where we remove dead trees, like I mentioned, when they present risk. But maybe focus a lot of effort too on trying to cull out or reduce bark beetle populations to help, you know, kind of mitigate the impacts that we're going to continue to experience. And so it's a matter of getting these trees on the ground and also some of the trees on the edge of it. They kind of concentric rings spread out. And so kind of thinning and removing those trees really helps to control local populations. But this is just, this kind of mortality is, there's not a lot at this stage in these kinds of stands you can do. But when we have stands where bark beetles are not, you know, the mortality is just the beginning and they're not established yet, we can do a lot more. We can thin, and that's really, at the end of the day, to prevent bark beetle outbreaks, to deal with current outbreaks, is to improve the health of the system, right? So thinning trees to improve the vigor or make them more... So thinning trees to improve the vigor or make them more resilient, to try to make them a little bit more drought tolerant, to make them more resilient to fire damage. And so the idea is that we want to thin the forest. We have to manage the trees, reduce the vegetation, space trees out to reduce competition, and that's the best way to prevent bark beetle outbreaks. Again, it's really key that when you're in these systems, we have to manage the slash or the waste material producing, because they will create conditions that can infest healthy trees. Insecticides do work, they're typically for high-value trees, because they're expensive and you can't really use the kind of insecticides you need for this. On the landscape level, there's a potential impact.
Can you describe, you've said it multiple times, high-value trees?
Whatever, if you're in a community, or if you have a task force working on this, it's, it's the decision of the community to what a high-value tree is. So is it a big ponderosa pine next to your house that you have aesthetic value and you cherish? You're probably going to want to think about how you're going to protect that tree, as opposed to a tree on the landscape where maybe it's, it's, it's almost like you're an acceptable loss.
Or a campground.
Or a campground, a high user.
If you cut all the trees down, no one's going to come.
Changes the atmosphere.
Parks, yeah, parks, campgrounds, anywhere where trees have important value from, from a, what we call a utilitarian perspective, right? Because we value it, it has, it has some important justification for why we're treating that, that particular area. So insecticides do work, but I'm not going to go into the differences, but they can be used, it's expensive, it has to be done by a certified applicator, it is an option. Pheromones, tip, I wish I could have time to go on this, it's super cool, bark beetles are really neat, they communicate, they have, they produce pheromones that they talk to each other with, they actually click when they're in the trees, it's pretty awesome. But we've synthesized their communication chemicals, and we can disrupt their ability to communicate and feed on trees. However, our particular pests, we don't have any of those pheromones available, so it's not really an option for most of what we're dealing with. Again, when we talk about high-value trees, supplemental watering is a really important thing to do for high, for trees where that's a, a salute, not a solution, but an option, and where you have the resources to do that. When we're in drought stress, it's not something you can just put hundreds of gallons of water on a tree, because you feel like it, you have to really think about whether that's a valuable use of that water. But it does work, if you reduce the outstress, you increase the vigor, and that tree is more resilient to the, to the bark beetles. After outbreaks, where we have significant mortality events, you can think about planting non-susceptible hosts. So one thing that, I've been talking with a lot of the native Californians and the local tribes, is through fire suppression, we have basically an expansion and encroachment of conifers into what were historically hardwood forests. And so when we think about all the conifer mortality, are we going to replant conifer back into the systems? Or because we're planning for droughts to continue, and we're thinking about climate change, maybe we're transitioning those back to oak woodlands or mixed hardwood forests. So thinking about planting your species, being smart about where you plant and where you do restoration with conifers, is going to be really key in, in long-term management of these systems. Just because somebody mentioned it, I want to point out, it's, the conifers is the big one. Conifers are always the first ones that start dying with drought stress. But we're at a point in our current drought where the hardwoods are also being significantly affected. And I'm sure a lot of the folks here and y'all have seen oaks that look like they're not doing too hot. And there's a lot of stuff going on here, but a big one that I've noticed a lot is western oak bark beetle, it's a native. It likes drought-stressed oak trees, we have a lot of them. It factors a disease called foamy bark hanker, and so it's kind of popping up, and we're seeing more and more oak mortality. It prefers, or it's very common in black oak and tree live oak, which we have quite a bit of here, so that's something that we need to keep an eye on. The management is the same, we treat it the same way, they're bark beetles, we think the same way.
Also the ambrosia beetle?
We do not, so.
Because I've, I've heard that's in South County.
Yeah, so that's the Mediterranean oak bore, that is a new, a recently detected invasive insect that, it, it likes the white oak, so we found it, we know for sure it's in valley oak, we found it in blue oak. Its epicenter is in, in northern Napa County, but it's definitely established and confirmed in, in Middletown, Southern Lake County, as well as Eastern Snoke County. So it's something else to think about that. The trick is, we're going to create a lot of biomass that we have to manage. That biomass moves around, it can move a lot of places, it can go very far. When we're dealing with invasive insects, this is the time where we have to be really smart about how we're moving and where we're moving material, because we can spread and make issues worse. So it's really, I think it's key that we have to think about too, about how we're managing that material that we're producing. This is a lot of information, but, you know, there's a lot of great resources on dealing with these forest pests. A lot of the material I have already compiled onto, onto our website, use CCE Mendocino Forest Health and Forest Resources webpages. And so we can just spend days and days talking about this, if you wanted to. But there is a lot of good information that will help you make those decisions as, as we move forward, and then figuring how to deal with this. One thing I don't have, that there's financial resources. The short of it is, there aren't really any designated resources for dealing with forest health issues. You have Clerk who has some of their grants, and CAL FIRE has forest health grants that we can go after as a community, but for most private landowners and, and the local, the LRA, there is not, the state's not going to send a task force and say like, alright, cool, we're here to solve the problem. It's up to, up to you guys to figure out what to do. And you're, if you haven't already, more and more landowners are going to expect you to do something, which we need to talk about, but I think part of that conversation needs to be about pre, it's just like pre-fire management, we need to think about pre-forest health, health outbreak issues, and talk about management before it gets to this point. And so that's a definitely important part of this conversation, is preventing this from happening in the future. Alright, so that's, real quick, Roland, is there any questions specifically about what we're talking about?
Do you guys have questions for him, or you want to just? We'll do it at the end, but if you want to talk about the P-Bay during public comment, it'll just be three minutes, but we can get a little update on that.
Sure.
Awesome, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so now I have some slides to talk about, kind of the other side of the issue. He's explained the issue, and now kind of what's going to be our response, and what are we looking at? So I think Matthew's got those slides. And so yesterday, I, I participated in a second aerial survey, we went out in December, and Chief Duncan and Chief York are in the back there, were with us. And what I expected to see was, was double mortality from December. And I was blown away, I can't even quantify what I saw. It was absolutely incredible. Depressing. We were joined by Diane Dillon, Supervisor from Napa County, and also staffers from Senator McGuire and Assemblymember Cecilia Aguirre Curry's office. I really needed them to see what's happening, they got a lot out of the meeting. Last week, I also had a meeting with Supervisor Dillon and Supervisor Hescheck from Mendocino. And it, you know, we, this is happening to all three of our counties simultaneously, so it's really important that we take that regional approach. So we'll kind of just go through these talking points. That is a picture of right below Seagull Mountain, in between Mount Hannah, so that's in the Salamina Valley area, which was in Mike's slides, probably didn't quite know where it was, but that has changed exponentially too. So let's take a look at our Tree Mortality Task Force, which came out of the Risk Reduction Authority in February. We've had a handful of meetings. Sheriff Martin was present for one, or maybe more, I can't remember. It's been kind of difficult to figure out what the strategy is, like, what do we do? This problem is so massive. So the very first thing we decided to do was to do an educational town hall, which I think a lot of people watched, I think a lot of people got a lot out of it. It's important to understand the science behind what's going on and what we can do. So all the Risk Reduction members and participants are invited, so we've, you know, we have a lot of people that have come to some meetings, and, you know, we're just trying to, we're just starting to get some traction and momentum, but, and also trying to figure out what, what is our goal, what's our mission, what are we, what are we going to do? So engaging PG&E and Caltrans is really critical. Caltrans technically hasn't come to our meeting yet, but I'm talking to them in other ways, and the same with BLM. So just getting all of the partners to the table to, at least at minimum, parse out the work, who needs to do what, right? So PG&E has, they're responsible for their infrastructure. So PG&E, you go after your trees, report back to us what you're doing, the trees that could fall on power lines, that's great, because otherwise, we're going to have Clerk spending their hard-earned grant money on trees that are somebody else's in, in the responsibility area. So trying to get those priorities aligned with whoever's responsible has, is kind of been the beginning of all of this work. So Caltrans was not intending on doing any more vegetation work for the next two years here, they were just wrapping up a program, and then they were going to go up to the northern counties and then circle back here later. And so now, because of this, they are out surveying, because, you know, it's changing almost daily with the trees. So it's important to just have them continually surveying, and then the next step is figuring out what their work plan is going to be. So starting from County of Lake, Supervisor Simon and I are attending those meetings, we have Public Works there, because, you know, we have a lot of these hazard trees in our right-ofways and along our roads. And so that's going to be part of the strategy we're going to talk about a little bit later. And we've had Sheriff Martin involved, CAL FIRE, of course, Mike Jones, and our Master Gardener, National Forest Service, USDA, NRCS, BLM, tribes have been amazing, Clerk has been amazing, and then PG&E and Caltrans have been showing up on the regular. And so it's, it's amazing to have this group come together and kind of just figure out how we're going to get through this. This is really for the long haul, this is, you know, we're in the very beginning stages of this. So, next slide, please. Okay, so what is our strategy for public safety? As Mike said, we can't stop the trees from dying, but what we can do is harden our roadways and our evacuation routes. We can remove hazardous trees from communities, and we can build and maintain our fuel breaks. So in this picture, this is the slope of Mount Canuckdie to the south of Riviera West. And so you can see, this picture I took in January, much more tree death has occurred there, but that's the fuel break, that's separating all that mass from our community. So those are the steps that we need to be taking. So for hardening our roadways and evacuation routes, we have PG&E working, we have Caltrans working, Calpine, I've also been in communication with them, they're reaching out to their landowners where their roads go through, and trying to coordinate that work being done for their roadways. And then Public Works is a strategy that we frankly need to develop. We do not have the capacity within our department, nor do we have the funds to, to do the work that needs to be done. So Director de Leon has done initial studies, come back to me, yep, thousands of trees in our right-ofways that need to come down. So we, we haven't dialed into that part of it yet, but hopefully there'll be something coming back to us soon where we can have that discussion as a group. Removing hazardous trees from our communities. Clerk, they, they realigned their priorities to jump on a problem that could potentially have been catastrophic. So they moved, shifted priorities, there was a big parcel in between two neighborhoods, it was sort of the epicenter of this death, and that's where the 300 trees have been removed. They're going to be working with the homeowners in those areas, but first allowing PG&E to go through and get their trees down first, again, so we're not duplicating work, and everybody can be very strategic with their funds. So that's the work PG&E is doing, they're also surveying the Canuckdie corridor down in the Riviera's, they've been working with the HOAs, which I'm happy to see, three out of my four HOAs here, because we work very closely together on all of these strategies too. So the next item under Removing Hazardous Trees From Communities is our Zone of Benefit. And as we've been having our meetings together, there are funds in the Zone of Benefit program, which the, within those HOAs, they voted to assess themselves, $100, and there was money in those funds, and that has been used to abate properties, but now the focus is on getting those hazardous trees out. So we have code enforcement cooperating with the HOAs to identify those trees. I know Clerk has already taken trees out of there too. So a lot of moving parts, but a lot of partners, and, and some progress being made, thankfully. Fuel breaks, we have Clerk working on the fuel breaks, and we are promised by BLM that they will get to that fire break. By Riviera Heights, and we'll see, we'll see. But they, they're getting a lot of pressure from us, they're getting a lot of pressure from Congressman Thompson's office, and we're not going to let that pressure up, because there is a tremendous amount of tree death that's happened in the Black Forest and in that BLM responsibility area. So next slide. So grants and funding opportunities, and this, this is for us. So this, this doesn't include the grants that Clerk is going after, although that, you know, helps us as a collaborative and as a community. These are some of the things that we have gone after. We, let's see, was it February? We went, the California Fire Safety Council, no, it was December, we applied for that grant, we were supposed to hear about it in February, that's for $380,000. And again, worked with the HOAs to get that application submitted through Public Works to, to address the hazardous trees and keep the roadways clear, and purchasing some equipment that will help with that too. But we still haven't heard about that grant, so I don't know, I've heard that they're also putting more funds into that account. So I, I'm not sure what's going on with that, we check regularly, and we're anxiously awaiting that. Now, we also put together the Prepare California Jump Start Grant, which Carol worked on with me, and originally, and we approved that application, it was for $1 million to CalOES, to Jump Start, that's for our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer for five years. Originally, it was for $1 million, because that, we were going to have that officer have support staff, but we kind of, we kind of heard that we needed to dial it back a little bit, so we did. So that's $636,000, we were supposed to hear about that in April. But that is going to be the staff person that is going to help, in, as a liaison between these different departments, to help manage grants and identify these opportunities within our county staff. And that is not something that we've ever had before, so that is a critical piece as we move forward with all of these climate change issues that we're seeing every single year, develop more. So we're waiting on that. That red check mark is supposed to be by the Zone of Benefit, because that represents the only funds that we have in hand. But I'll go back up to the Home Hardening Initiative, which we just heard about, $22 million that potentially is coming to the Kelseyville Riviera, and again, that includes defensible space. So the Zone of Benefit funds, that's the checkmark, those are the money, that's the money we have in hand that the county can use to, to address the problem. So you can see, we have a lot of work to do, we have opportunities, we're going to keep hunting more opportunities, and I hope to be bringing you more updates soon, but that's where we're at right now. All of these outstanding grants, well, I guess I can talk about that when we get a little further down the road, but we have to make ourselves, we, we have to show how proactive we are being, and that, you know, we, we need to win these grants, there's just no question we need to win these grants. So everything that we can do to, to make ourselves look like we deserve them, we have to do. So next slide. So Critical Needs, and here, this picture, you know, just south of Riviera West, and this, this picture was just taken the other day, so much, much more death has happened since the picture I took in January. So Critical Needs, we need a local emergency, and we need that to be on the radar of the state. And this week, Thursday, is the forest, or I'm sorry, Wildfire and Forest Resiliency Task Force, which was put together by the state. The meeting is in Santa Rosa, so I will be going there, and I've been instructed, I guess we'll say, it's been recommended, that we have a local emergency so that we can continue. emergency so that we can continue to get their attention. So the director of that task force made that recommendation to us. What I continue to ask for from our state and federal electeds, and RCRC and CSAC, is a direct funding source that is agile. So we see that this tree problem quickly changes. We have to be able to address things as they come up. And so that was what was so amazing about Clerk's money funding that they already had in hand is they were able to reprioritize a situation that was way out of hand. That's what we need. We can't keep going after all of these grants. CalFire has a billion dollars in grants and we are a county that has grant fatigue, Clerk has grant fatigue. We're overwhelmed with the grant writing process. So getting that Chief Resiliency Officer in place to help manage some of the grants is going to be helpful, but we have to have access to money. And small counties like us have the same request. So that's what I've been pushing really hard on. I haven't gotten anywhere yet, but we're going to keep pushing on that because the way this grant cycle is designed, it's not going to help us in time. So that's the funding pool that we need and we need it to be agile. So we need the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and the disposal site. I'm really glad you brought this up. And I'm going to say sites, I have the S up there, and a long-term strategy on how we dispose of all this vegetation. We have 300 trees laying on the ground. A lot of them are inaccessible and they can't be moved, but a good deal of them can be moved and we have no place to move them. We have no county disposal site. We have, our biochar site is tied up in litigation. Hopefully that can be an option, but given what we're looking at and the years in front of us, we have to have multiple strategies in place. So CalFire has a curtain burner coming to Cobb very soon. That's one thing that's going to help. And that's going to help because Clerk doesn't have to pay exorbitant fees trucking those trees far away. They can just take it a few miles to the curtain burner, but that curtain burner has to be staffed and we have to have it running 24/7 sometimes to dispose of those trees. But we have to have several options because we, you know, and Chief York is here and maybe he can speak a little bit later. He has experience with tree death in other counties and we, you know, this is something that we have to look at what's been done in the past and figure out what works for us. Because trucking these vegetation out and logs out of our county is not an option. It's just going to be way too expensive. So figuring that out within our county has to be part of the strategy. And we're going to need funding for that. And we're going to need staff for that. If that's something the county is going to do, if the county is going to have one option and we're going to build relationships with other partners that are going to do it, but we need many disposal sites throughout the county. We need our Public Works and County Easement Strategy. We haven't built that yet, but that's what we need to build and we need to figure out where that funding is going to go, come from. Homeowner assistance in heavily affected areas. So when you have one ponderosa next to your tree, it could be $1,000, $2,000 to take that tree down, depending on where it is and how difficult it is to access. If you live in an area where you have 10 ponderosas on your little quarter acre lot, which is a lot, you know, that's very standard in a lot of the Cobb community, that's, how can, we have people that just can't afford that. We have gray pines and knob cones in our HOAs. And I'm only speaking about my district because that's what I know, but from my flyover, this is county-wide. So when we talk about the home hardening program, we talk about clustering, right? So we want to have many homes hardened in a community. It's the same thing with this. We can't have dead tree, dead hazardous trees hanging out in our neighborhoods because one person can't afford it. So, you know, we're going to need that strategy in place of how do we help that, you know, how do we help that homeowner get that tree down so it doesn't fall on the house and hurt somebody, you know, be a hazard to the road, catch embers if there's a fire, a lot of reasons why we need to do that. And we can't possibly have safe communities if we have standing dead trees in them. So some sort of assistance program to figure that part out is another one of our critical needs. And then capacity, contractors and crews. And we've been doing a good job actually of developing this workforce. We have obviously room to grow with more contractors and crews, but people are understanding that this is part of our new economy and they're making the investments in the equipment that is needed and developing their crews. And so I'm happy to report we're making progress, but we don't nearly have the crews that we need for these problems. Okay, next slide. So next steps, I just want to point out this picture. I took this yesterday. And this is just south of the Middletown Rancheria, that's Highway 29. And you see that cluster of dead trees before it goes up to the mountain. I believe that's Middletown Rancheria. And you can see the tree death from the top of that ridge all the way down to the bottom of the picture. And Supervisor Simon has reported on this. Last summer on his rancheria, they had 100 dead trees. By the end of the summer, they had 1,200 dead trees. And it's growing exponentially and look at how much it has spread. It's spread to the south side of the highway and it goes all the way to Napa. So that's what we're looking at. And you can see, that's a community, those are homes. That is a highway. So we have a lot of work to do. So we're going to need the proclamation of a local emergency, which I've brought for a little bit later today. We could discuss that. Part of that is a strategy to get Lake County designated as a tree mortality designation. There is a list, the state has that list, they have not been adding counties to the list. It was developed, you know, seven, eight years ago when it was a big problem in the Sierras, southern Sierras. And Lake County never met the threshold to be on that list. And so getting on the state's radar with the emergency proclamation and getting on that designation list is going to be really helpful as we continue to move forward and we have such great needs that we just can't handle locally. And then the, continuing to build the regional approach with our friends in Napa Mendocino County. I will say Supervisor Dylan had no idea that it was that bad. She had gotten calls from people in England talking about tree death and her ag commissioner was starting to talk about it, but she was completely blown away. She had no idea how bad it was because you can't really get a sense of it until you're in the air. So it's very eye-opening. I've encouraged Supervisor Hasek to do a survey of his county. And we're going to continue the surveys every six months to keep collecting the data. So engaging with the state, the Wildfire Forest Resilience Task Force, our federal partners, RCRC and CSAC, everybody there has experience with tree mortality, but it hasn't come up as an issue today. So it's, and that's what I've been running up against for this past many months is people are like, what? It's back, oh, it's an issue again? So we've got to get everybody kind of thinking about it here in this area locally for us anyway. And then getting that Public Works strategy developed is obviously critical. We have to have safe roadways, we have to have safe evacuation routes, we have to harden, harden our roadways and keep our communities safe. So that is my presentation. I think that's it. And then the final piece of today's massive presentation, thank you for all of your patience, is our CWPP update. Long awaited. It has been completed, it has been, has it turned over to, I'm going to turn it over to Matthew and we're going to talk about the next steps for that process.
Thank you Supervisor Piska. Good afternoon Supervisors, this is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As your board is aware, in recent years, the county has been working with Lake County Resource Conservation District and others to develop an updated Community Wildfire Protection Plan, or CWPP. Partners in this effort have included the Lake County Fire Safe Council, Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, Lake County Resource Conservation District, Clearlake Environmental Research Center, or Clerk, Lake County's fire protection districts and members of the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association and others, including members of the public that have provided valuable comments. The Lake County Fuel Reduction and Prevention Priorities List and Action Plan, which are the project lists that Mr. Evans from Clerk referred to earlier, are central to the document and we're deeply grateful to our fire chiefs and members of the public for their partnership in ensuring the needs of Lake County's communities are appropriately prioritized. Our partners have indicated inclusion of projects on these lists can also be critical to accessing state and federal funding opportunities. So broad-based input was really a matter of high priority. And some of you will recall at earlier stages of the plan and project priorities list development, feedback was gathered through a number of public meetings and some of those were Municipal Advisory Council meetings and other community groups. And you heard earlier from Christina, who is Clerk's current Civic Spark Fellow. Laurel Bard, who's now the Fire and Forest Street Project Coordinator for Clerk, did an outstanding job as a Civic Spark Fellow engaging the community in spite of COVID-19 pandemic in helping to gather that list of priorities. And I'm also very excited now to report that the drafting work on the CWPP was completed Sunday, May 1st. This is a huge milestone and represents countless hours of work, much of which was undertaken by community members as volunteers. And I want to thank all who contributed to that thus far in any capacity. We look forward to celebrating the CWPP draft's publication soon and hosting a community workshop, very probably in connection with one of your board's upcoming meetings. Staff anticipates that we'll have a 30-day public comment period and then your board will have the opportunity to approve and sign the final draft following integration of any needed changes. We are very grateful with the partnership of the fire chiefs and others that the document has already been pretty thoroughly vetted as a result of that previous process and we look forward to hearing further from the public. And Dr. Lyons, who has helped coordinate, Dr. Harry Lyons, who's helped coordinate Lake County Resource Conservation District's efforts, is also here in Zoom, so I wanted to offer Dr. Lyons an opportunity to comment further if you have some additional remarks.
Thank you, Matthew. I just wanted to briefly express my delight on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Resource Conservation District, your Resource Conservation District. Our society is going to shuttle resources to take care of infrastructure and climate change and when that money becomes available, you will have four words you'll be able to say, "We have a plan." And then it's a delight, I want to thank you all for your patience. I've been stalling you ever since we started to put on masks. And so you've got the document, read it over, give us your input. Thank you so much, Matthew, and thank you to this fire community in the County of Lake, which is phenomenal community and a wonderful to work with.
Thank you very much, Harry. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Matthew, and thank you, Harry. Thank you for the presentation. I think this is very important. That CWPP, I remember when, prior to your serving, that's one thing we were working on, especially during the COVID year where we weren't necessarily meeting as much. And yeah, this is, it is a very big milestone.
And Matthew, can you just elaborate a little bit more on what the commenting process is going to be? So we're going to have that hosted on our website and how are people going to comment and what's the period, just kind of get into that a little deeper, please?
Right, so, and that's still under development, so I didn't announce it at this time, but we'll be looking forward to announcing that soon and celebrating the publication. It actually is already available on our website. We did develop a page just to host it. It's at our Fire Safe Council landing page at the moment. So if you search Fire Safe Council on the County of Lake webpage, you can already review the plan, but we will be announcing the comment process and opportunities for people to contribute further, you know, very, very, very soon.
Okay, wonderful. And thank you, thank you, Harry, thank you, Linda, thank you to the fire chiefs for your input. This is a massive project that is finally getting to the finish line and I'm just really grateful for all the participants. It's amazing to finally have a plan. And that's it for my presentation.
I'll go ahead and open it up for public input. I know that there was some folks.
Oh, did you have your pens up?
Yeah. Is there anybody in the public that'd like to come up and say something? Please come on up.
As an old instructor, I can't talk without having a handout. Good afternoon, my name's Phil Hartley and I have the great pleasure of serving as the President of the Board of Directors for Riviera West, one of the three Riviera's. Along with Buckingham, we together constitute the largest population area in Lake County. And we all have a history of working very well together. Riviera West is a public, an HOA governed by the laws of the state of California. We are actually, HOAs are incorporated, you know, corporations in the state of California with their own body of law that directs how we have to conduct our business. We have about 225 homes in our community, another 200 and some non-developed lots, about 464 acres. Riviera West was Lake County's first fire-wise community and we've been a fire-wise community approved each year since 2014. We have a very aggressive fire prevention program, a lot of cooperation from our people who live in the community, very, very supportive because of course they live, because they live there. We can see the trees, of course, from our homes, we can see the trees up on Mount Canokti and as we drive past Kiss Corner and down Highway 29, we can see the trees all lined up all the way down to Lower Lake and beyond. And those trees are, I mean, they're scary when you look at that. But they pale in comparison to when all those trees are in the middle of your community. That becomes terrifying. Currently, we noticed on Riviera West, when this began to really take off, that by the end of summer last year, we noticed we had about 300 dead trees, all huge, tall pine trees. One of the interesting aspects of these trees is that 99% of the dead trees in my community are from two species only, and that's gray pines and knobcomb pines, gray pines sometimes called digger pines. All of these trees are within 100 feet of a house. In fact, there's no house in Riviera West that's more than about 200 or 300 feet from a dead tree currently. We've made progress with great support from Clerk and Will Evans' leadership and understanding that HOAs can be treated as corporations that can be given responsibilities, can enter into contracts, can become subcontractors. We're able to sometimes get work done a lot faster because we have good relationships with our contractors and we're used to doing this. This is something we do year-round, every single year. So we've removed about 100 of those trees through funds from the sub-grant that we had from Clerk, through our own, use of our, some of our own funds, and then from our homeowners. But this is an expensive process. The average cost of removing a tall pine tree right now is about $2,500 to $3,000. So if you have, you know, five, six trees on your property, you're looking at a cost to remove those trees that is in fact going to exceed the current retail value of your property. Fortunately, our property owners have mostly hung on to us through the program that Jessica mentioned, our special districts, we have a way of taking down trees for owners who've abandoned their properties or walked away from the properties. We have some funds to remove those trees. So we've taken down about 100 trees so far, but we have a 200 So we've taken down about 100 trees so far, but we have 200 other trees that stand there right in the middle of the community. We're not going to be able to do that alone. We're going to have to have outside assistance. If you think about the danger of some dead trees that are five miles away on top of a ridge someplace versus a bunch of dead trees that are 50 feet from your house, I mean, the scale of the emergency here is geometric. We have some hypotheses about these dead trees. I thought I would just share, it is interesting to us that they are all of from two species, and they are all about the same age. What we have surmised is that after the last great fire in our area, which was a long time ago, early 1960s, the area was reseeded with fast-growing pine species, which is great. The developer of Riviera West was able to sell lots of properties. Property used to just be chameis and mesquite and whatnot, and so he planted a lot of fast-growing little pine trees. People came up, they saw cute little seven and eight-foot pines all over the place, and so they bought the properties and so forth. And those are now 70 to 100 feet tall, and the thing they all share in common is their age. The trees, just like people, have life expectancies, and the life expectancies of these two species is in the 40 to 50-year range. So let's see, planted in the 60s, and here we are 50 years later, and they're all dying. Literally 10 trees on a lot will all die within the same week. It's really an amazing thing. If you come drive through Riviera West, people are really shocked by what they drive by. So we 100%, of course, in support of the efforts to have an emergency declaration that helps certainly with getting the attention of outside vendors. So that's my contribution, although I'd be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity on behalf of Riviera West to express our appreciation for our supervisor, who's doing an absolutely terrific job. She's brought together departments in the county with our community to work cooperatively together. She's supported all of our efforts that we've undertaken, and plus she, as you see today, is generating initiatives that are going to effectively reduce the dangers in our community. So Jessica, on behalf of my community, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Desar. I'm the Executive Director of Kelseyville Riviera, and I'm actually glad you waited for public comment because I was a little beside myself, tearing up and shaking. The proposition of having this program that Jessica and Robin introduced is just amazing and overwhelming, and now I see why Jessica kind of insisted that I be here today, because I really had no idea. And so I just wanted to thank CAL OES, CAL FIRE, Jessica, and NCO. Our community definitely, we are concerned about the trees. We don't have quite the die-off that the other Rivieras have, but we're definitely working in coordination with them and supporting them to try to manage everything as much as possible. But the concern that I have had, the immense concern, is the home hardening and the age of our homes, the density of our homes is so great that it really concerns us, a fire coming around that mountain or embers cast in our community. So this is huge and want to express the gratitude of my community for sure. I've been there for 10 years, and so when this came up, I have, literally have tons of people running through my head that I know, seniors, low-income individuals that have homes they haven't been able to manage, and some of those individuals, our fire program has been extremely aggressive, and they have not always been happy with me. It's kind of been a very thankless job, but to be able to give something, provide something back to them is just huge. And some of them have worked really hard to meet our expectations, and so having some kind of assistance for them is just incredible. So just want to say thank you. I won't belabor the tree thing any further.
Thank you Cindy. When I was campaigning, and I went door-to-door all through the Kelseyville Riviera, all I could think about was that all the homes looked just like my home that burned down. Everything about them, it broke my heart every time I went up to someone's stairs and knocked on the door and looked at the house and looked at the siding and looked at the deck and looked at the vents and the windows and the doors, and I was just like, oh my God. So my old home was built in the same era. CAL OES wanted to do this demonstration in a high-density area with homes that were all built around the same time, so it worked into exactly what they wanted for this pilot phase. So I'm so happy for the people of Kelseyville Riviera, and we're going to really need your HOA support for the success of this program. So I'm really looking forward to it, and I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you. My name's Kathy Andre, and I serve as President of the Riviera Heights Homeowners Association. And Phil just said a whole lot, but we're experiencing exactly the same thing that Riviera West is experiencing as far as tree mortality. Right now, we have probably about 100 dead trees within our association. In the last month, we've taken out 20 just around the perimeter of our clubhouse. There are dead trees throughout our subdivision, and they're costly. Phil is right, they're averaging about $2,500 a tree to take down, and it's incredibly stressful and difficult for our owners to pony up that kind of money, and they've been fabulous at working with us to do so. But we will need aid and financial assistance to be able to deal with this as this problem increases. I'm extremely grateful to Supervisor Pyska for presenting the proclamation for the dead tree and tree removal mitigation program. And CLERC, can't thank them enough for everything you guys have done. They have helped us remove 45 trees down our evacuation routes in Riviera Heights, another 45 in Riviera West. We've mitigated CAL FIRE breaks. We have a lot of mitigation programs going on in all four of the HOAs, and we're working really hard to support the fire efforts that are being done. I honestly and truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank Jessica Pyska, our supervisor, for really, really ramping up this entire program, and we're very grateful to the Board of Supervisors for your support in this. Thank you.
Well, I just want to point out how proactive all four of those HOAs are in the area. We work together really well. You do so much to educate your community, to coordinate with your community, and to coordinate with code enforcement. So you're not slackers at all, but the fact that you're doing all of this work and we still don't have what it takes to solve the problem speaks volumes, and that's why we have to keep pushing for this. Thank you.
All right.
So I don't, did you want to? Oh, okay.
My name is Magdalena Valdorama. I am the Program Director for the Siegler Springs Community Redevelopment Association. We call ourselves SSCRA. I wanted to, there wasn't time earlier to pose the question to CAL OES and NCO about reaching the low-income homeowners that don't have computers. So how do they get to learn about that program, and how do they get to apply for that?
Are they still on? There's Robin. Okay, that's one thing that we've definitely been working through, Magdalena, but I'm going to let Robin handle that.
Cool.
I believe JC is here as well, but I'm happy to take this one. Great question, Magdalena. So we at NCO are used to working with vulnerable populations. It's a big part of what we do. So we're already looking at a campaign that will provide applications and materials in print, both English and Spanish. We anticipate canvassing through the Kelseyville Riviera itself, whether that's door-to-door, or putting mailers, or attending the HOA meetings, the board meetings. So lots of different strategies there. We are looking forward to the close partnership with the HOA, and if we could get into their newsletter regularly, for instance, that would be a really great way to make sure that we're reaching all of the homeowners. So again, we're in the really early phases of the project, but we do anticipate a strong partnership with the HOA and various types of communication outreach to reach all the people in the area.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I also had a couple of statements to make. I like to think that the work that I do as a Program Director in my nonprofit is to sort of represent the voices of community members that are not part of an HOA or a Property Owners Association. So I've been instrumental in establishing the five, there are now five fire-wise communities in Cobb area, and two in the making. And I do want to acknowledge Phil Hartley and Kathy Andre here, who got us started, advising us on how to get our own fire-wise communities started. So they're part of the pioneering work that's been done here. And then, you know, thanks to the, so I'm just going to say that we've also sponsored a tow chain cover kit. We've had, in the past year, distributed 553 of these tow chain covers in 15 locations around the county, including Clear Lake, Middletown, Kelseyville, and Lakeport, all the main hardware stores, at four different events, and of course, at the Cobb Resource Hub. And anecdotal evidence says that there are 50 fires that get sparked by tow chains. So this is a big deal, and I thought that the Board should know about that. I also wanted to let you know, I have these for you.
Awesome, thank you. Magdalena, how many fire-wise neighborhoods are we up to?
I think we're at about 14, so that we're getting close to 17 now, actually, because there's another one in Upper Lake. There's another one in Buckingham Palace, I believe, it's in Formation, and another one potentially in the Loughlomond area.
Yeah, it's pretty new.
What I've just handed out to the Board of Supervisors is a copy of the Living with Wildfire in Lake County, California booklet. This was done under the auspices of the California Climate Investment Fund with CAL FIRE, and this is not your ordinary generic wildfire booklet. These people that you see on the cover are Lake County people. So when someone looks through, when someone in Lake County looks through this booklet, they are seeing themselves and the locations that they love and live with. I'm working now with a few of the tribes to develop a supplement on cultural burning because they are very important partners for this problem that we have. And I welcome the formation of a new CAL FIRE division on, let's see, it's called... Sorry. It was just announced this morning about community wildfire mitigation. It's a new division within the Office of the State Fire Marshal, so I'm hoping we'll be getting some more help from there. But, oh, this is also so new that we include Zone Zero. So that's new legislation that's come in, and Forester Mike Jones is going to be attending a meeting tomorrow about the Zone Zero. So that's yours, zero to five feet away from your home. Every home is going to be required to, a new home is going to be required to meet that standard. And finally, I would just like to thank Supervisor Crandall, who's one of the first chairs at the Risk Reduction Authority, and Chairman Mook Simon, and you Supervisor Pyska, because I never dreamed that when I started this work that it would balloon this much and really begin to make a difference in Lake County.
Thank you. I knew it would. Once I let her take my seat, I knew it would from there. She was already doing the work, you know, coming to the meeting, so.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned, these are all free to the public. They've been, they're available now at Mendo Mill, Kelseyville Lumber, Hardesters in Cobb, where else? A whole bunch of places. Keep your eye out, President. They're very striking.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other public input. Is there any online, maybe?
Can I just request some public input?
Yeah.
Mike, do you want to come up and just talk about the PBA?
Prescribed Burning?
Yeah.
Yeah, hi, Michael Jones, UC Cooperative Extension, also a founding member of the Lake County Prescribed Burn Association. And so I'm just really excited to announce that last Wednesday, we had our first big burn, a community burn. We did 20-acre grass burn up on Jerusalem Great, so behind Valley. Well, we couldn't have done it without Chief Wink. He really stepped up and helped to host landowner, get us into a place where we could burn with burn permits and working with air quality, and Chief York was also there, so CAL FIRE had a huge presence, and South Lake brought an engine, and CAL FIRE brought an engine. We didn't need you guys, which was great, but it was cool to see them there. 30, around 30 or 40 people showed up, a lot of people from within the community. Tara, who's a founding member, or Lindsey Daly representing Tara, and as well as Will and CLERC are also on the Steering Committee, and so everybody had representatives there, and it was a really great opportunity. So we're looking forward to, you know, more opportunities, more involvement from folks. I know you're all invited, so hopefully we see you guys in the next one. We're actually still planning another burn later this year, we'll see how that goes, but we're trying. We're trying for another small burn, so it was really neat, and hopefully there's media there, so maybe it'll show up in a paper, there'll be some pictures. So, yeah, any questions about PBA? I mean, I know we've talked about it before, but it was a perfect kind of example of what community burning can be.
Right. I'm glad there's efforts into that.
Yeah, yeah, we're all really excited, and we have a TREX too, if you know that, the Training Exchange, Prescribed Fire Training Exchange, which the PBA is helping Tara host this season. So we'll be doing a lot more burning coming up in the next couple of years, and there'll be community style, so people will be able to participate if they're interested.
The pictures looked amazing.
Good.
So exciting.
Yeah, it was successful, it was a great burn.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Good fire.
Good fire.
All right.
Do you want to have any disposal questions?
Did you have any other questions, Supervisor?
No suggestions.
Suggestions? You want suggestions?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to say, because we have Chief York here, if you had questions about disposal. Okay.
So I guess I'll close the public input, and, oh, there is, okay. Sorry, I didn't see, can you?
Chris Lee?
Chris, if you can go ahead and unmute, and we'll give you your three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisors. My name is Chris Lee. I work for CAL FIRE as a forest health specialist. I work throughout the North Coast counties and the counties kind of just to the east, including Lake, and I've been working with Supervisor Pyska, with colleagues from CAL FIRE, and with Mike Jones to get a handle on sort of the extent of some of this mortality. I just wanted to make a really quick point, that is a technical point, but it links to a bigger point about the trees that have been dying around the Rivieras, especially the knobcone pines. It's very true that those pine trees have a short life expectancy, but the ones that are there are very old. You would really typically have expected them to have a much shorter life expectancy because those trees have evolved, along with a lot of our coastal pines, they're very similar, they've evolved to live with fire. And what we would expect to happen is for those trees to burn up and then come back in a really, really dense thicket, in the sort of way that you see in those neighborhoods and up the slopes of Mount Canocdi. And the reason I think it's important to keep that in mind is because if we think about those trees as a relic of a one-time planting episode, then that leads us to see this as a one-time problem that can be solved. And I'm glad that Mike just talked about the Prescribed Burn Association, and other people have talked about how it's important to get to a place where you think about land management before the climate change problem. management before the climate change problems really start to compound, because it's going to be a very long-term management problem and something that climate change is going to make worse and worse, and something that is going to be crucial to develop capacity to address over that long term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Chris and I have been working together. He participated in both flyovers, and then he came back in January, and we walked all around Mount Connocti. We went through Cobb, and he and his partner Curtis Ewing checked all the trees in your neighborhood and definitely found bugs and larvae. So I just, I want to, I'm so grateful for the CAL FIRE support and the fact that we're able to have these resources available to us to collect the data, which is so important, right? We can't move forward without having this data.
Johanna, do you have a next person? Christina, if you can unmute? Just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can. There you go. We hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So I am a survivor of the valley fire, somewhat, meaning my life survived, but not my home, and moved away from the Cobb area after the fire and moved into Riviera West with a bit of naivete, not realizing the level of challenges that all the area has, and have been an active person in terms of mitigation within the property I have now. But even with that level of mitigation, taking out trees, removing bushes, clearing as much as humanly possible, my insurance went from 2,500 to 9,500 this session. And I just am wondering what the type of removal, firewise, and various other activities that I support, and I'm immensely grateful for the actions of the various persons within our community, how that might have an impact on the individual and the insurance challenges that the homeowners are now facing.
Yeah, and Christina, I think it was today, I posted it on my Facebook page, there was a webinar from the Insurance Commissioner, I think it's today, was it today? And so none of us were able to watch it. But that webinar talks about that transparency on how scores are calculated and kind of moving into that area of being able to have some benefit to the responsibilities that you carry out around your home to make it more hardened and more fire safe. But we're not able to participate in that because it's on a Tuesday. So hopefully, somebody watched it, and maybe we can find that recording and try and get some more information. But it sounds like Phil may have a little bit more to fill in. But you have to come up to the microphone.
Come to the microphone, yeah.
Our State Commissioner of Insurance, who tries to govern all of these so-called chartered, you know, insurance companies who have a favored spot in California, was not able to get legislation that would accomplish just what you said, that is, to create a transparent and objective system of rating homes for insurance. But he did manage to get a cooperative agreement with about 12, 13 of the major insurance companies to offer discounts if they would meet certain standards. Some have to do with home hardening, some have to do with clearing space around your house, and the one I like is you get a discount if you live in a firewise community. That information, Christina, you'll be getting in the mail in about two weeks when you get our annual mailing. We're sending it out to all of our people. But yes, we're making progress there.
Progress is coming slow, but it is coming. And that webinar was today at 1:00. So we'll have to see if we can get a copy of that recording.
And is there another person with their hand up? Or I think that's it? All right, so we'll go ahead. All right, there is. Okay, if you want to unmute, there was one person that was on. If you can unmute, I'm not sure what phone number that is, but 6205.
Oh, that's me, Bart Levinson.
Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I am wondering if it's possible to get that webinar onto the county's YouTube website so that we can all access it. Just wanted to make that request.
All right. We'll see what we can do. Thank you for that request. And, okay, Betsy Con.
Our internet looks choppy.
Okay.
She muted again. She's unmuted.
There she goes.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
It takes a while for the process to end. So I just have a question. You started out with the proposal for a declaration of an emergency, and I wonder if that's actually on the agenda for today as an action item? And if it is, regardless of when it's going to be scheduled to be an action item, if we'll have a conversation about actual emergency preparedness related to the conditions that you've just spent a good deal of time describing?
Yeah, we do have that as an item, so we'll be getting to that a little bit later.
Okay, Magdalena?
I was just asked to point out that the Living with Wildfire booklet includes a lot of information, specific information on creating defensible space and home hardening. And it does mention some information about insurance as well.
Thank you for highlighting that. Are there any other hands up? No, don't see any, so I'll bring it back to the Board and close public input at this time. Supervisor Sabate, you had something?
So I've been thinking about insurance this whole time. I know that I took down some trees around my property and called my insurance and got the wonderful word that we don't help you until it falls on the house. We don't do prevention. So I'm sure that I'm not the only one dealing with that level of insurance where it does not help you to prepare for saving your house, it only helps you after the fact. There are things that are changing at the state level. Senator Dodd passed a bill with $20 million for helping us having liability insurance for prescribed burns. And I think that maybe we need to look at, looking at that same type of insurance from the state for tree mortality. If they can recognize us as being a county that's dealing with that, maybe they can recognize us as having access to a pool where we can, through approval processes, to ensure it's not being abused. Maybe that's one avenue that we can use. One of the thoughts that I had for biomass, and you were saying sites, which makes perfect sense, sometimes we forget that the county owns specific properties that are completely dead, and they are old landfills. There's one, I believe, in Kelseyville. There's one, I believe, in Upper Lake. They're kind of old school, lost properties that we have to continue to maintain and meet state guidelines. Maybe those are easily available type of properties where we can do that type of work there. I think we'd still have to contract with somebody to be able to move things around and eventually break it down, but it would be an open space area that would probably be able to handle that type of workload, and that would be a good collaboration from something we have, an asset that we can work with others in order to achieve the goal of ensuring that we can do something with this biomass that we're going to produce.
Oh, that's exactly right. There is a site actually in Cobb. And I've had conversations already with Director DeLeon about that, and it was a possible site for the air curtain burner. And that's exactly what we need to do, is look at what we have already in our portfolio and figure out which type of disposal works best for each site. So, you know, if we have a chipping operation on Cobb, then we have to haul the trees to this place, and then we have to haul those chips somewhere else, so maybe that's more appropriate for curtain burning. I don't know. But, you know, that's kind of the holistic strategy that we need to develop because we need to have those sites countywide.
Yeah. It helps when you have those assets. And then the other part is, I know what's happening in District Two. We did some work that was kind of showed off by Clerk. Thank you very much, Clerk, for being the saving grace to getting us the CEQA approval. I know that Chief Wink had been working on that NEPA approval for four, five years. BLM is very active in our conversations with us. In fact, I'm meeting with them on Friday, I think it is, to look at Phase Two. But it's such a slow, ongoing process, which really, to be honest, it irks me that we have that much paper pushing to do and trying to beat the next fire rather than being able to do something proactively so much more efficiently. But I know what's happening in the district I serve. I've heard a lot of what's happening in the district you serve. You're talking about Zona Benefits, you're talking about the home hardening. I hope that we are spreading the opportunities throughout all the districts because obviously, by looking at the maps, especially when Mike Jones was showing us the locations of the area where we're seeing this, that we are proactively working for each area to have some sort of plan. I don't think that we can eliminate every possibility in one district and not make sure that we're also doing something else. I know Phase Two for us, you saw a line going on a ridge, the Davis Ridge. We're looking at the other ridge going to the east. It'll make a triangle. Once we have that triangle done, we're looking, I think that might be, that might be the 2,200 acres. I think it's a little bit less than that. But we're looking at a massive controlled burn in that area to really create a zone of protection for the city of Clear Lake where there is a large population as well. So I know that, I know the work that's happening locally for where I am. I just hope that everyone else is having the same level of progress because it's all about chipping away at every place.
Yeah, so I'll respond to that. You know, now we have, the Risk Reduction Authority Board has so many members across the county, and the cities are seated on it, and we have tribal nations seated on it. And the work that we're continuing to do that I alluded to earlier with the workshops in June is to build a countywide fire safe council. So we technically have a standing committee that is called the Lake County Fire Safe Council, and it meets and it discusses items. But it doesn't have, it doesn't have the foundation and the structure and the capacity to function the way that a fire safe council needs to. And so, you know, we've got more workshops to do to continue to building this, but that is a priority, the long-term priority. I don't know when we're going to get there. I'm trying as hard as I can. But that will be the countywide organization that the Risk Reduction Authority will support because the Risk Reduction Authority is supposed to go after all risks. The Fire Safe Council will act as it does in other, the countywide Fire Safe Council will act kind of as it does in our neighboring counties. Has a lot of power, and it can get a lot done, and it can really prioritize the whole county by having a board with representation from everybody around the county. It'll be developing those firewise neighborhoods. It'll be able to go after grants and go after the priorities that are laid out in the CWPP. So those are the functions that we need our Fire Safe Council to have. We're just not there yet, but we continue to chip away at it. And I really, I feel confident that, you know, it's a lot of workshops to get there. But that's how you empower the people to step up and do that, right? Because these are all volunteers.
Right.
A lot of volunteers here today. So that's the process of getting that set up so that we will have a more countywide approach, and we'll have that Fire Safe Council be a partner. And then ultimately, we'll have our Climate Resiliency Officer in our admin office that can also coordinate with the Fire Safe Council, and also coordinate with our different departments and our nonprofits to keep that, that long-term vision to covering the whole county with these priorities.
All right. I think that's all for our presentation on that one, right? So any other questions, any comments? We're good.
Okay.
All right, so let's move on to the, actually, before I do that, we're going to just real quick, talk about 7.2, 7.4, 7.8. And what we're going to do is continue those when we have a full board. I didn't know if there's anything that we needed to do in order to push those forward till next week. We just can go ahead and decide it right now. That way, we don't belabor the, or, you know.
Okay, so 7.2?
Yes. The 7.4 and 7.8, and those items are talking about District Four Supervisor filling the role, the recruitment for CAO, and then also 7.8. Marina said she can do that next week, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So go ahead, and your next item is the?
Do we need to take an action to move them?
No, she said we can.
You just move them? Okay.
So 6.13, Presentation of Proclamation in Support of Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, Jessica Pyska. Will, if you wanted to come up?
We have gone on and on about how grateful we are for you all, but here is your official proclamation. In support of Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, whereas Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, also known as Clerk, brings science, education, government, tribal, and business groups together to resolve issues involving Clear Lake. And whereas Clerk coordinates projects to help combat the impacts of wildfire, promote positive regenerations of burn areas, and preserve the forests and woodlands that have not been destroyed by fire. And whereas, since 2019, Clerk has secured over $8.7 million for community projects in Lake County. And whereas, Clerk collaborates with local partners and stakeholders to address priority projects in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan in the communities of Cobb, Locklomond, Middletown, Clear Lake Riviera, City of Clear Lake, Clear Lake Oaks, Lucerne, Scotts Valley, and within the Mendocino National Forest. And whereas, Clerk hosts two Civic Spark Fellows who have contributed toward building our local fire resilience capacity by providing outdated GIS data for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, public outreach at municipal advisory councils, coordinating with the AmeriCorps teams, completing property assessments, organizing volunteer events such as broombusters, and public outreach. Clerk has completed the Mount Connocti Interface Fuel Break around the Clear Lake Riviera, Kelseyville Riviera, Riviera West, and Riviera Heights, and Clerk has also completed the Davis Fuel Break, the West Scotts Valley Fuel Break, and the Harbin Springs Fuel Break. And whereas, as of April 2022, Clerk has completed mitigation treatment of over 2,200 acres and removed over 450 hazardous trees. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors supports the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center and its effort to develop and maintain sustainable ecosystems and healthy forests and reduce the wildfire threat to our community. Thank you. Where's everybody else?
They're all out working, yeah.
That's fair. Do you have anything to say?
Just thanks to everyone for the support, and this means a whole lot, especially hearing from all the people that paved the path for us to follow. A lot of ways, our work we do is just a continuation of all the work that's been done in the community. We're just trying to kick it up a notch, so thanks for everyone. Thanks to the Board. Thanks for making this a priority.
Thank you.
All right. Any comments or any public input?
I brought both.
I know.
No? All right, so we'll close that out. No? All right. So we'll close that item, 6.15, wait, I'm sorry, 6.14, Presentation of Proclamation in Support of Wildfire Community Preparedness Day, May 1, 2022, Supervisor Pisca.
Come on. Both of you.
All three and a half hours.
No, no, Stan can take the pictures.
Yeah.
Come on.
He's good.
Where's Mike?
Left.
Okay.
The Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation in Support of Wildfire Community Preparedness Day, May 1, 2022. Whereas wildfires significantly impacts Lake County's environmental, economic, and social well-being. And whereas residents of Lake County's fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas. And whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, and essential service providers must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management and vegetation, reduction surrounding their locations, and construction and maintenance to resist ignition and fire spread. And whereas wildfires can occur during any month. And whereas residents, property owners, utility providers, evacuation corridor owners, and essential service providers must stay continuously vigilant and prepare for wildfire throughout the year. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors supports the first day of May 2022 as Lake County Wildfire Awareness and Call to Action Day. Request that residents and property owners create 100 feet of defensible space, reduce fuels, and have your address clearly posted. And request that, that providers, phone, cable, fiber, electrical at all, create defensible space and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of infrastructure stations and transmission systems, and have their addresses clearly posted. And request that evacuation corridor owners, federal, state, county, and cities are requested to create defensible space and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of roadways. And request that essential service providers, hospitals, medical clinics, fire stations, police stations, government facilities, senior centers, care and shelter locations, create defensible space, and reduce and/or remove all fuels within 100 feet of their infrastructure, and have their address clearly posted. And request that, lastly, all community members request alerts, LACO alerts, review your evacuation checklist, place your emergency supply kit and go bag in your vehicle, and build a stay box for when you can't leave, and know your zone. Passed and adopted this third day of May 2022.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Great proclamation. And while we're here, we have an audience.
I got something for you.
What?
So we, as, as the chief of South Lake County Fire Protection District, it is also my honor, in addition to accepting the proclamation, that Jessica Pisca gets a badge that says Supervisor by the South Lake County Fire Protection District. So thank you for being our supervisor. Jessica is an amazing asset, a huge advocate, and I do want to present one more item, which is just a little more personal. And that is something that we have from the South Lake County Fire Protection District, but it is native to the valley fire survivors. So bear with me, this may be painful. So today, let me get this out too. This is a, this challenge coin is a unique coin specific to the communities that the South Lake County Fire Protection proudly serves and the devastating valley fire that we experienced in 2015. 2013, the fire district started by distributing challenge coins to our members with the Latin creed Semper Vigilia, which translates to always be alert, prepared, and faithful. The fire district has a second coin that is specific to the auxiliary group called the Fire Sirens, who raise money throughout the years to support emergency response efforts. Each of these coins also carries a symbol of the South Lake County Fire Protection District's 293 square miles that was established in 1925. They are intended to capture the very essence of affiliation and instill the pride to those who carry them. With the valley fire, we knew we needed to recognize members and non-members of the fire district for their leadership, dedication, and resilience. Also heroic efforts during and after the fire. As we move into the recovery portion, we want you to remember those who have suffered in so many ways. We also want you to be proud of what you've accomplished with your resilience and never wavering dedication. Carry this with you as now you are an honorary member of the fire district, South Lake County Fire Protection District, Fire Chief, and Board of Directors.
I got my badge.
She's got a badge.
Thank you for that. That's pretty cool. All right. 6.15 is Consideration of Resolution Proclaiming the Existence of a Local Emergency Due to Pervasive Tree Mortality. And from what I understand, we would need a full five in order to pass this, or?
Supervisor, you'd need four.
Need four. And right now, we only have three. So this may be something we need to carry forward to next week.
Your board can indicate, just indicate by consensus that you support it today, but you can't take formal action to pass it until you have at least one more supervisor.
Well, I support it for sure, and I know that, I won't speak for the others, but.
Well, can I talk about it first?
Yes.
Thanks. So I, I did a lot of reach out to other supervisors in other counties, and I had a really long conversation with a supervisor, Rosemary Smallcombs, from Mariposa County. And when they were in the beginning phases of their tree mortality situation, they, you know, everything that we're talking about and doing right now, they were in the throes of that. So we've learned a lot from their experience. And so she coordinated with her surrounding counties, too, Mariposa and Tulare, and they all agreed to do their proclamations like this, emergency proclamations, with the intent, just like I've put forth, the intent to have the attention from the state. So I, when I met with Mendocino and Napa Supervisors, I shared that this is something that we could all do together, too. I sent this to them. They were very interested in it. And as I mentioned, the task force meeting, shockingly, is in Santa Rosa, which is a statewide task force meeting this week. So I will be there. And I did receive word that that director would like to see this come from our county to help with more efforts down the road. So it's just a call for help, really. You know, that's, that's what we're doing. We use those proclamations. We use a lot of the language because it's similar language. It's not just fire fuels we need to worry about. It's our watersheds. It's tourism. I have a lot of the old resort communities in Cobb. People come up for the trees, and all the trees are dying around their cabins. So that's gonna change those communities and could impact tourism. We have loggers. We have the Prather family. Their forests, meticulously managed forests are also being impacted. So as it's spelled out in the proclamation, there are a lot of concerns. The tree mortality issue will affect us broadly, quite broadly. So that's the reason I put it together. I know Sheriff Martin is here. We had long conversations about it. So I don't know if you want to add something. But that's why I bring it to you. And that's why I really wanted it passed today, so I could go there and say, we did it, we did it.
I understand. Supervisor, respond to you.
Yeah, I, to be honest, I wasn't sure if it's a proclamation like what we've done before, because I saw the word resolution in there as well. And so I was a little confused as to what exactly, what, what, because a proclamation, I'm perfectly fine with that. Our normal declaration, like we would of a local health emergency or a local emergency, at that point, I'm not certain that that would be the case. But because it said resolution, I wasn't sure. Are we doing it like a declaration? Or are we doing it as a proclamation that just states declaration of the mental health, like we did, not declaration, it's proclamation of mental health, like we did earlier? Or if this is more substantive, substantative?
Ms. Grant?
Maybe. Not using the right word.
This is a proclamation for the existence of a local emergency, and you declare a local emergency. You can change the words if you want to just say a proclamation supporting efforts to reduce the dangers of pervasive tree mortality. You can make those changes and pass it today. But to declare an emergency condition requires four votes of your five-member board.
Well, as I stated, I have no problem with the proclamation with a declaration. I'm not 100% sure where I stand on that. I've had a few conversations. I know the state has a tree mortality state of emergency currently that is still active, I think from 2014. I don't know. I, I, yes, it is a problem. Yes, it's something to solve. I'm not quite sure that this gains us what we're looking for. I'd have to figure it out more and do more research with the people that you said have instructed you that this is something that is needed. But I-
So I would recommend that you call Stacy Heaton then, if you want to have a conversation with somebody. That's where I've gotten this recommendation, recommendation from.
From RCRC.
From RCRC.
So, so where do we go from here, then? Would do we?
I think no matter what, it has to come back because there's two others, and you could get your forfeits easy. Or if I get more information and it sways me into the position of a yes, then you have all five. But at this moment in time, at this moment.
Yeah, I think we'll just have to wait until next week. I, I don't know. I mean, this is, this is, I, I, I mean, I, I'm guessing that you had conversations with Sheriff Martin. Is that who?
That was one of the people.
Okay. So do you want to come up and talk about it?
And my, my reason for reaching out to Sheriff Martin is I'm thinking a declaration of emergency, OES, are we asking anything from them? And from what I understand, we're not. But I'm still, and I know it might sound ridiculous, but we're emergenced out. And unless it's absolutely necessary, which at this point, I don't have enough information to say 100% it's necessary, I don't want to dilute it like Facebook has diluted the word friends. I want to, emergency to really mean emergency. And when you're in a two-year emergency, you start to forget that you're in emergency. When we're in a short-term emergency, then yes, it's easy to, rapid-changing action or rapidly changing crisis is my definition of emergency. And so I struggle with whether or not it's needed. But again, I'll reach out to some of the folks I have not reached out to.
Yeah.
But thus far, I'm interested in the discussion, but I've not been completely convinced that this is necessary.
Well, I think we're at the point right now where we can't do the work that needs to be done with the resources that we have in the county. And so that's why we need help, and that's why we need resources, and that's why I've made this request, and why the request was recommended. So we'll let Sheriff-
Sheriff Martin.
Sure. Pardon me, my allergies are really getting me. So my voice is scratchy, that's why. The ability to declare a local emergency by the governing body is outlined in California Emergency Services Act, Section 8630. Your governing body can, can declare an emergency on its own volition. And as county council indicated, that would require a four-fifth vote. When thinking about what the purpose of declaring an emergency is, oftentimes we declare emergencies for exactly that reason, when the, the needs exceed the capability within the operational area. And so we've had discussions all the way back till, since February, I think, at least February, discussing, you know, what options are available. When these discussions started, I had reached out to CalOES. I haven't reached, I haven't spoke to anybody on that statewide task force. I haven't heard anything about that. So I'm not familiar with the funding sources that they have are, that are, might be available. But the team at CalOES indicated that the governor's executive order and proclamation from, actually from Governor Brown, still remains in effect, and that Lake County remains an eligible entity to apply for funding to address some of these issues, certainly not all the issues that were brought up in the presentation. But those, those funding sources would help maybe remove and identify the dead and dying trees that pose a threat to the local roadways and infrastructure. It certainly wouldn't reach out and help homeowners in individual HOAs with those resources or anywhere on private property, but those resources do exist. If we're talking about the reason for proclaiming an emergency, the, the, if the reason is to bring attention to it, that would certainly bring attention to it. I would imagine there might be other ways we could bring attention to it as well. But again, I'm not familiar with the funding sources that the, that the statewide task force is, is referring to. So I can't speak on that. I can only speak on the funding source that's available through the 2015 CDAA proclamation, which the state indicated that we, we can apply for without declaring a local emergency.
Yeah. And we have done, I know you've been talking to Susan, and we're trying to do that research. And that's why I say the public work strategy is, is gonna come a little bit later. Once we figure out how that's gonna work, that, that is gonna require 25% match. And if we're looking at thousands and thousands of trees, that's a big deal. The other things that are in the presentation, the disposal sites, when I was meeting with, you know, Trevor yesterday from Senator McGuire's office, and he, you know, having those discussions, like, how much money are you going to need for these disposal sites? You know, how much capacity are you gonna need? So the, clearing the roadways and the easements is only one piece of it. Then what do you do with the trees? Then what do you do with the vegetation? So, so that's a part of it. But I think as, you know, declaring this as a local emergency is necessary for us to, to get the resources to look at this holistically. And I guess I can send you a lot more pictures from my flyover.
Sheriff Martin, did you have anything else?
I don't.
Oh, and I also am gonna just bring up, when I, when I was expecting to see double the tree mortality, and I, and I can't even tell you, I can't even quantify what it was I saw, Mike Jones said today, by the end of summer, it's going to be tenfold greater than it is now. So when he gave his presentation about taking immediate action now, early, even though we're in a place where we're having mass, mass swarms and mass kill and, you know, it's growing exponentially, there are areas in our county that we can protect, and we can do that forest management in those areas that aren't affected right now. So as I mentioned, a big strategy needs to be developed here. It's, it's not just piecemealing, and we have a lot at stake.
Ms. Grant?
If you'd like, and I understand that you want to move forward with the emergency, but if you need something for your meetings that the board could approve right now with just a majority, you could do a proclamation declaring the danger to public health, safety, and welfare resulting from pervasive tree mortality. Whereas tree mortality creates persistent serious risk of harm, and whereas the Board of Supervisors may execute its constitutional police powers to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and address the dangers resulting from pervasive tree mortality. Now therefore, this board declares tree mortality is a threat to public health, safety, and welfare, and this board intends to exercise its police powers to access funding sources, collaborate with local and state organizations, and develop a course of action to protect the county of Lake and its residents from the risks created by pervasive tree mortality.
We can pass that today?
You could do that today if-
Is that what, remind me, was that a proclamation, or what?
It can be a proclamation. It can be a resolution. I just scribbled it on the yellow pad.
We can pass that as a resolution.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's not a official declaration of emergency.
Sure. Okay. I'm, I'm happy with that.
And I would be comfortable-
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. That doesn't preclude you from moving forward with your emergency.
We can still do that one probably next week, then. But for, for the purposes of you having something for Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah. This does that. So I mean, if you're fine with that. Any public input? I should probably open up for more, just in case. Do you see any? Yes. Yes.
When you're talking about a rapidly changing crisis, please come to our associations and look and see the dynamic difference and impact that these trees have had. You can look at a piece of property and there's nothing wrong with it and all the trees look healthy and two weeks later, 10 of them may be dead, five of them may be dead. And these are trees that are going to fall on homes. These are going to, trees that are going to kill people. These are trees that are going to block evacuation routes when we're trying to get out and escape from a wildfire. This is the worst-case scenario that you can imagine for our most densely populated subdivisions and our insurance rates, everything that we're talking about here. This is a crisis. This is something that has to be dealt with right now. This is something that we can't wait and wait and wait and wait to deal with. This is our lives, our property, our community, our Board of Supervisors, and we need your help. We need it now. And this is a very, very, very critical, important crisis to address now. And I highly encourage you, please, to consider the proclamation that Jessica, Supervisor Pyska proposed today at the next meeting. I highly encourage you to support the resolution that is before you at the moment. And again, people's lives depend on this. Our homes depend on this. Our survival depend on this. Our ability to remain Lake County citizens and own homes up here and be able to protect our homes up here depend on this. Your ability as supervisors, you know, to support us, it depends on this also. Please, we desperately need your help. We desperately want to support all of your efforts, but we're in crisis mode and we need this to happen now and we need the funding. It is the funding that we do not have in this county to be able to address and cure these very, very imminent threats to our lives and our livelihood. So please, please, please consider this and hear what I'm saying. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you give your name?
I don't think you do, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. My name is Kathy Andre and I proudly serve as President of the Riviera Heights Homeowners Association. And I would also like to say, just in a little pre-advance, that we are forming the Conocti Fire Safety Council in our area with, that is going to be an area that reaches the entire Soda Bay corridor and surrounding area. This is how serious we are. We have no way to evacuate out of our subdivisions and out of Soda Bay Road if those trees that are precariously hanging over our roads are not cleared. If, we will not be able to evacuate. Lives will be lost. And so we are taking every step that we can to do this. If these trees keep dying down on Soda Bay Road, you're going to have hundreds of people die. And I couldn't live with that. I'm sorry. I just, I'm not made of that kind of strength. But we're doing every single thing that we can to help people learn how to mitigate their properties, do defensible space. We're trying everything we can to do this, but we need money. We need money and we need your support and we need it now. So thank you very much. Again, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil Harley, Riviera West. What she said.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just add, we have, I showed you all the grants that we have outstanding that we have not heard back. We haven't been rejected. We haven't been accepted. But what we need is more attention so that we can tip these over and have them accepted and have those resources flowing in. Because right now, we're not, we haven't been notified. We don't know what's happening, but we need that extra edge.
And so you, did you have someone online or, actually, go ahead, Magdalena, you were going to go ahead.
Magdalena Valderrama, Program Director of the Seagull Springs Community Redevelopment Association. So I just wanted to underscore a couple of things that were said here. I understand that the CalOES has that program for CDA, I think it was called. This is a spike in that emergency and the lifetime of a tree is so much longer than the lifetime of a human. So when you factor that perspective in, the tree, we're in trouble. We're just in trouble. We've had wildfire, people have been saying, oh, you know, we're not going to have wildfire. Oh, yeah, the wildfire was a long time ago. But when that thing cracks, it just cracks. You've built up your fuel load. So it's not, and from my understanding, from all the different classes that I've taken, all the different people that I've talked with, you have to have, as Jessica has been saying, Supervisor Pyska has been saying, you have to have multiple strategies. It is an ecosystem. So you cannot just come at it from one direction. You have to come at it with all the resources you have. And Lake County is not known for tapping into all those resources. I think that we've got an amazing community. The community is just starting to wake up and do its part. We need the county to do its part. Thank you.
Thank you. And someone on, is there someone on Zoom?
Yeah, there's Betsy Khan and then phone 6205.
So Betsy, if you can unmute, go ahead and we'll take your comment.
Thank you. Jake, unmute me while, so yes, you know, I have followed the progress of Northern California ecosystems since 2003 with the Cedars fire in San Diego. The Sierras have suffered through all this. All the counties on the, on the west, on the east side of the valley have been through this entire thing. I can't do more than to say what Kathy Andre has already expressed, Magdalena's already expressed, we've all expressed this. I want to thank Jessica, of course, because, you know, she recognized this months ago. She mobilized all these resources months ago. We knew at the beginning of the year that we no longer have a fire season and we do not have the capacity to have a fully-developed proactive preventive Office of Emergency Services. We must get a head-receiving end of having to scramble because we didn't take care of the problem in advance. I really urge you. Certainly, thank you, Anita, for whipping out that resolution. Get that done. Bring it back. Declare an emergency and move forward. Be, you've done, you're on the brink of this incredible level of leadership. Congratulations to all of you. Now just go ahead and do it, please.
Thank you. Next, phone 6206, if you can unmute. Oh, 6205. I thought I remembered it.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Bart Levinson. I want to echo everything that's just been said, especially by Kathy Andre. I live in another area of the Riviera. Just surrounding my house alone are 12 dead trees. Two of those are directly across from where the new siren for the Riviera has been installed and where a giant wood water tank exists, which is a major storage place for water in our neighborhood. And what you all need to envision is, we all know about the winds that whip through our county. So this is going to, these are like giant matchsticks, hundreds of feet in the sky. And embers are going to start flying. If you can imagine one pine tree going up in flames and then how quickly it's going to carry by the wind from tree to dead tree to dead tree to dead tree. And also, I want to ask all of you, as you're driving around the county, please, look on the sides of the road. Look at how many leaning trees there are already. And Cindy is absolutely right that you will begin to notice how many are ready to fall in the roadway. And we will, oh, sorry, Kathy, I meant to say Kathy, so many are going to just fall in the roadway and block our ability to even get out. And it can easily be seen now by all of us. We need this.
Thank you. Are there any other you see online? No, I, nope. So closed public input, bring it back to the board. And did you want to go and go with the verbiage that-
I do, I do. And Sheriff Martin and I have been having this conversation for months. You know, it's not something that he feels that he wants to move forward to, but he did make the suggestion that our board could do it. And there is not any part of my district that is not heavily severely impacted by this. And I saw it with my own eyes yesterday. We flew the entire district. It's more heavily impacted than any of the other places that we have seen. And there is nothing that I won't do to protect the constituents in my district.
Well, I also know that it's, I went up in the hills behind Bartlett Springs and go, you take that road and there's lots of dead trees. You have to bring a saw just in case they fall. So I get it. I understand. I feel like we're in a time of where, for the past 100, 150 years, a lot of policies, actions, and different initiatives were taken without the foresight of the future. And that's why we're in a time where we have so many emergencies, so many situations that we have to, we have to take care of because they've been standing for years. And the best thing we can do is just start taking care of them. So it's unfortunate that, you know, our ancestors didn't have a lot of foresight in some instances, but at the same time, they were trying to do the best what they could. And so it's our job to make sure we don't push that folk.
Well, and it's rapidly exacerbated by climate change and that is not anything that we can deny. And that's why we have to, that's why I use the word agile in that funding request. Because things are changing so quickly that we have to be able to have the capability to respond.
All right.
Okay, so is it a resolution or a-
If you'd like, I can read a title if your board approves it.
Yes.
A resolution for claiming the continuing threat to public health, safety, and welfare resulting from pervasive tree mortality in the County of Lake.
I offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
Okay. Who do we have? Supervisor Sabatier?
Who's left?
I know.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. There we go. So next is our non-timed items and, yeah, you know, Supervisor Sabatier would like to take a break and I think we have a couple other things, but just wanted to echo one more thing that Susan had brought up. Thank you, is that the 7.5 would need to carry over to next week because it's a title or is a ordinance as well. So, but with that, we'll take a five-minute break and then come back and finish the rest of our non-timed items.
Three.
Three.